We're on record, go ahead.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it's being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:6 and SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Um, I'm here.
Mr. Kaplan.
The Bob.
What did he say?
On the record.
On the record.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Parek.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Yeah.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairman Iratain.
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, a board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. Ken.
Start off with the pledge of allegiance.
Just turn that way. It's over there.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has anything they brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none. Should we do this letter from O'Neill now or do it in the...
Uh, no, do it in the regular meeting.
Do it in a regular meeting, okay. We're gonna do resolutions now or not?
Regular meeting.
Huh?
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting, so I'm looking for an agenda for the special meeting.
There.
Got it.
Says resolutions.
That's got a resolution. It's just... No, that's the 7:30 meeting.
Yep.
Here's the 7 o'clock. Resolutions, there are none, okay, got it. All right, first case, application 2317, Marco Tucarello, 90 Mars Avenue, Sea Varyance to legalize a covered cellar entrance, addition to carport, paver driveway, paver walks, et cetera, et cetera. Good evening.
So you were sworn previously, so you're still under oath, you understand that? Thank you, you proceed.
I don't remember, Mr. Chris, do you remember?
How are you?
Now, you had to come back and...
Yes.
You were gonna provide some additional information.
Well, on the...
You were gonna talk to the engineer, was it?
In July, I was given a letter from the engineering department, uh, here. I was not given the letter at the time, so we had to schedule. I, uh, was given the letter, I analyzed the letter, and I met with the town engineer the day after the meeting in July, and, uh, we went over, uh, what the concern were, concerns were, and, uh, he, um, couldn't find any problems, um, with the, what was stated in the letters. I met with him on the property, I showed him, uh, pretty much all the, um, the downspouts, all the gathers, um, everything on the property that could have caused, uh, the runoff, the alleged runoff, and, uh, in, we actually poured water physically into the gathers and we demonstrated that the water was going to the stormwater drain directly. And, um, so the engineer basically told me that there was no issue.
Do you have a letter from him? Signed that? Do we have a letter from him stating that?
I, I've asked him to provide a letter, uh, he hasn't sent me a letter.
So we don't have a letter. We have your word to that, so what he said, okay.
Unless he wrote it and I didn't receive it.
Nora, we never got anything. Nope, never received anything.
And I met with him again, uh, I went to the engineering department, um, two weeks ago, actually, again, and, uh, we went over again the letter. I asked him again to please, please write a memo, uh, so that you could have it.
Subject to...
So if we approve this application, we're gonna prove it subject to not getting a negative letter from the engineer.
Absolutely.
We get a negative letter from the engineer, then all bets are off.
Yeah, also...
You know, I, look, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna deny you did this, I'm not gonna deny he said that.
I understand.
But we have to have some, something concrete, so we can, we can approve it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, my, my, my notes basically talk about the, there's issue, there were concerns about runoff issue, uh, need to speak with the town engineer, carry with, um, with the understanding he was gonna talk to the town engineer, and it's a 51823 engineer letter that was, uh, issued prior that he was supposed to resolve.
No, why didn't you have it?
So there's no follow-up letter, um, I don't see any follow-up letter, but as, as the, um, planner stated, we can make it subject to the letter, actually, here's, if you wanna see that, 518 letter.
Do, do you know who was the engineer going to? Yeah, Brandon Kreza. I have emails from him and...
So you were looking for us to approve a variance?
Yeah, somehow.
And the engineer, what we sent you back with was runoff stuff, go ahead.
Well, so the engineer, um, he brought a letter ba-based on what he had from zoning, and, uh, the letter from zoning said to, uh, you guys have this document?
Yeah, we got that.
Uh, so the variance are required to legalize several items, um, that's not entirely correct, I wanna say, because...
I'm sorry with you there?
That is not entirely correct, I wanna say, because I'm not trying to legalize all this, some of these are not built. He thought all this stuff was built.
That doesn't mean if they're disbuilt, they're legalized, who built them?
No, no, what I'm saying is, he, he thought all of this was built, so he just looked at the, uh, photo spool footage, he added them all up, and said that if being this, this were footage, then you need to remediate for, uh, with a dry well, but this is not built. So if, the letter would...
Not all of the... Parla Ticharelli, I was sworn in last time as well.
Okay.
Not, he's saying not all the things that he was adding up are already created, so not everything on that list that he added was constructed, there's some things that still aren't done yet.
So you're, you're looking to approve a variance to do them, is that what you're saying?
I would like to, um, I'm gonna look to reduce actually the amount of coverage, uh, because, uh, he explained to me that any, there is an ordinance that anything over, any improvement over 500 square feet, you need to build that dry well, so I'm gonna try to lower that, so that I don't have to do that.
We're talking about building coverage variance of 1.7%.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
Everything else is setbacks.
Yes.
I have a question, if I may.
Yes. So, go ahead, Mr. Engineer, tell us what the story is.
So, uh, the plans show a type B inlet where the proposed driveway, I just wanna know if that inlet's gonna be revised at all.
The type B inlet?
You see the type B inlet? Right at the edge of the proposed, the darkened driveway, I guess, the papers?
Right, right there.
Right, um, do you have enough room for the driveway, or is it gonna always, do you need to...
Yeah, no, I don't need to modify that at all.
You don't have to modify it?
No, that is already actually flush with the, with the curb, so I don't really need to, and it's, will be next to it, next to what I, I will be looking to...
Okay, so it's not...
There's no modification to that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chad, do you agree that the impervious coverage variance is only 1.7%?
Say that again?
Do you agree that the impervious coverage variance is only 1.7%, I'm sorry, building coverage, that's all he's looking for?
Uh, yes, if that's, that's the increase, um, I would have no reason to question what's being proposed here.
Can we go this way?
We, we would just make it subject to, as the planner stated, to the engineer providing a letter.
Okay.
You know, agreeing that he spoke to him and that, uh, he, he satisfied all the engineer's requirements of the May 18th, 2023 letter.
Nora, this is something we can get?
I will reach out to them.
Okay.
Or, uh, you should also...
I, I'm gonna, yeah, I think he just, recently had a baby, so that's probably...
Okay.
Fall off. He told me, expecting.
Any other questions by the board?
I guess, maybe just to clarify my recollection or for the record, what you're asking for variance for is, has already been done, or some is done, and some hasn't been done?
The, the cellar cover on the east side of the property, that one is, has been, uh, it's built. I built that when she was pregnant, I was getting water inside the house and, uh, from direct rain into the basement, so I'm sorry about that, but it was done. The carport is not built yet.
But you wanna build it.
I would like to build the carport, yes.
So if you build a carport, that's, that's a side yard, allowed 10 feet, and you're proposing 3 feet?
But, yeah, yes, that would be on the side of the, uh...
No, I understand, the point being...
It's Mount Tabor.
Yeah, I can't, that's the issue all the time.
Yes.
But that doesn't help us in this, okay. But the, the other parts, you're saying, they haven't been built, so therefore we don't have to approve the variance yet, but we're...
The other stuff, um...
Yeah, that, you wanna build it, so you want us to approve the variance so you can build it, back to the original application.
Yeah.
The engineer just came out and said you were okay with what you've already done, and the downspouts and all the drainwater stuff has been addressed, the drainwater issue's gone away now, is that correct?
There's no, yeah, there's no issue with the water.
Okay, good, that was the engineer's report, but the other things that we're have to deal with here are the variances you're seeking to build, what you're proposing here, that are non-compliant, okay? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And, and you... Wait, wait, one second. When you met with the engineer, you didn't withdraw any of the proposed improvements, right? So when you said everything's okay, that includes what you've built and what you haven't built, am I right?
He has said to me that...
Because that letter that we, the board is considering...
Yeah.
Has gotta include what you did and what you proposed to do.
Yes.
And in order to get to variances you're asking.
So, so I was saying earlier, the, uh...
If it wasn't the conversation, we'll probably see you again.
So, uh, we met with the engineer, we said it, I mentioned this ordinance about having, about any improvement above 500 square feet, a dry well would need to be built, so I, I told him I'm gonna reduce, uh, I'm gonna reduce the improvement to below 500 square feet.
So this doesn't get all, nothing has to be done today, right? You wanna do it, if you wanna get the carport done, my suggestion is you go back to the engineer, we put this on hold, and that the side yards are part of the case, uh, we see whatever you're gonna change, you give us a new survey showing what it's gonna be. You, you, you're gonna reduce something, you said, so why would the board give you a variance?
Well, it is, yes, so you're gonna reduce things, so then your original application request for relief is gonna change, so the planner is saying, talk to the engineer, get everything, uh, down, what you need, and, and come back here with exactly what you need, so we can put it in a resolution, so you're finished.
But, if I may, it's a 1.7% more, right? So let's say the variance is approved as it is, if I build less, even if it's something I can just do, if it's my choice?
If you're gonna build less, then you're gonna move, you're not gonna need the side yard relief of 3 feet, you may only need 4 or 5, or you may even be in conform, so you may not need that variance, that's what the planner is saying, I believe, is that correct?
But what does it hurt if he has the variance and doesn't use it?
Well, that's...
Yeah, he can do that.
Yeah, he can do that, we could probably approve that, but that only addresses the impervious coverage issue of the variances you're looking for, okay? It does not address the side yard setbacks and all the other variances that are here.
Okay, let's address them, can we address them now?
Yeah, but we can give him the variances if they're...
Yes.
If, if, if we find, you know, that it's appropriate, and he can choose not to utilize the variance, or, or less...
Then you can, you can go off his original application.
He just can't go over it, that's all.
I cannot go over it.
But if he's saying that he's gonna cut it back, I think you would wanna grant what he's requesting.
But if you're approving one, you're approving side yard setbacks with a lot of 6, 0 feet, allowed 40 feet, proposed 19 feet, significant variances in my opinion, right? Then I have an儿 testimony why I'd vote for it.
I think he's trying to avoid him to come back again.
Well, obviously, I don't blame for that.
But he's done everything we told him to do, the only reason we're having a problem is 'cause we didn't hear from the engineer.
Oh.
Why should he suffer for that?
Yeah, which is not unheard of.
But do you, do you want to ask to go ahead with your reduction, or you just want us to go ahead with what you have given to us?
I would like to go ahead with, uh, what you guys, what you, what's on your, because that's what you guys said, right? If that's what you're gonna approve now, if that's what was here tonight, and you decided to go less, I'll deal with it, continue.
My proposal would be this, see, you have the one part that you wanna build, and you're agreeing to build a smaller, so the impervious coverage issue can be addressed, I'm gonna say, okay, go ahead and do that. All the other stuff you're proposing here that's on this initial application, you still wanna do, but I have an儿 testimony why you should, or why we should approve it, and you're way beyond the allowable amounts that you just, so I would like, I would suggest you do what Chad would do, take this, what you wanna do, go back to the engineer, get the engineer's input on these things, okay? And, and then come back to us, because we cannot, I, I, I for one, I can't speak for the board, but I would not be in favor of approving all the variances you're requesting based on the current testimony and information we have at hand. I'm sorry, just can't do it.
Yeah, same thing.
So I'm sorry, but, you know, I guess you'll have to come back, okay? If you want us to vote on approval for your...
I understand, I mean, you don't wanna say, but I was saying July, when am I gonna come back?
I, I don't know that, but would you like us to decide on, on your request to do the addition, add less coverage, and approve the, uh, impervious coverage? You only want approval for the one thing right now?
I want to get approval, analyzing of the cellar cover and the doorbell of the cupboard.
Well... Okay.
Nah. Side yards, front yards, cellar entrance.
So if you wanna do the carport, that, that is... Well, we can't approve one thing tonight and then come back with everything else. Okay. You're gonna have to make a new application.
Yeah. Let the chairman explain.
I go by the, I go by the items on the, what we're just in the review, that's 59 square feet cellar cover entrance, I would like, that's existing, I would like to legalize that.
Do you want everything on the list?
Yes.
Do you want us to prove everything that's on the list?
Yes.
Can we talk about that?
Yes.
Okay, and, and why should we approve everything on the list? Because very little impervious coverage, you're looking for some side yard setbacks and things like that, have you talked to your neighbors, your neighbors have been notified? Has there been any question from your neighbors about, um, that they're not happy with what you're gonna do? Have you heard anything? No, no, nobody's here tonight, nobody's here tonight. Oh, you are here tonight?
Of the, of the west side and the east side, which those are...
Okay, so we've gotta hear from them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We go with the item one by one, or just...
One side and the other side.
Okay, I guess, first to you, you came in and mentioned that you met with the engineer and you're willing to reduce the size of the one addition and state, so the impervious coverage, we don't need to worry about anymore, that was, okay, but all the other ones that are on here for variances, you've not provided any testimony as to why you need to have us approve a 19-foot front yard versus 40-foot approved, a 3-foot side yard versus a 10-foot side yard, an 8-foot both side yards versus a 20-foot, a 1.5 side yard with walkway paver versus, 1.5 feet versus 6 feet, so you're, you're, you're encroaching and over the allowable amounts in every one of those areas, and we've heard no testimony as to why you need to do that.
See, the 19-foot setback is existing now.
Yeah.
He's just putting it in line with what's already there. That, that's...
My house is the setback.
It's Mount Tabor and the setback, that's what you have. So to do what you wanna do, you need the variance?
Yes. So, the 30, so the 18, we said, it's a, well, it's imaginably, it's, uh, so... Setback 40 feet in front of the house.
Yeah, that's right.
That's not a problem there, right?
That's my explanation.
Number 2 carport, that's the side of the house, 3 feet. The neighbor is gonna say that she's okay.
Is that, is that your neighbors, your, are your in-laws?
My mother-in-law.
Because I was, that's what you said last time.
Do you have, you have an attached garage on your house?
I have, uh, I have a attached garage.
And you're gonna put the, uh, carport to the outside of the attached garage? And do you have any, um, vegetation there, any trees or anything you're gonna have to take down?
No.
There's no trees in your path?
No.
What is the need for the carport?
For the second car.
Say that again?
The egg corns from the car. They make dent in your car.
So you're not planning on taking any trees now?
No. I would prefer to keep more.
We finally have an applicant who's not chopping down trees to solve a problem.
There's a big mature tree right next to your...
Yeah, that's...
That's in front?
That's in front.
And you're gonna...
So the, the garage is here, the tree is here.
So you're gonna put the carport on the side of that?
You're gonna have to go around the back of the tree to get, to get in and out?
You're gonna cut that tree down?
And you're gonna have to go around that tree to get, the tree's not in your way?
No, not at all.
Okay.
And I, I think when you were here before, there was some testimony at the house, if you're looking at your house to the right, it was a family members, and that's where that sidewalk is going to?
Yeah, that's what he said last time.
Yes, okay, and that's why that, that, that little paver path is to, I think your mother-in-law's or...
My mother.
And that, I think, is the, um, 3, no, that's the 0, or the 1.5?
But that's existing.
Probably the 0.
Or 0, yeah.
Yeah, right, so...
My existing, that means you put it in already, or was it when you bought the house?
That's legalizing it.
You wanna legalize what you've already got?
What's the next item?
Next item, so it's the cellar entrance, set that, it's 5 feet.
They're on the, they're on the side.
That's built.
What's the purpose of, oh, it's already built, then never mind.
It was the flooding.
It's, uh, because I have a cellar entrance, basement entrance, and water just goes in there, like when it rains and floods the basement, and there was, I...
So you're on it?
They only do inspections on sunny days, just so you know.
I didn't understand, the, there is an entrance, you built a new entrance?
No.
No.
Just to cover it.
Just to cover, just to... Okay, all right.
Which has worked, 'cause it hasn't flooded there since, and we've had many big rainstorms recently.
And you also have a gutter, uh...
And I put a gather on there, covered, so the water goes directly to the stormwater drain, it's not water going through any other...
What's your next item?
Next item is the outside yards.
You're exacerbating that, by putting the, by putting the carport on, you want to take your total side yard down, by that?
No, it says 8 feet existing, allowed 20, 8 feet proposed, that's why I'm confused.
Can't be, you've got a garage over there.
That's why I'm confused now.
Well, if it's 8 feet, because it would be 5 plus 3, right? 5 from one side, 3 from one side, etc.
Yeah, but you're, you're creating 3, like how much currently, between the garage and your, your other-in-law's property, how far?
Garage and there is 19 feet.
Okay, so you're reducing it by 19 feet?
You're doing it by 4.
Is the carport gonna be 19 feet wide?
No.
Uh, 14?
The distance may be...
It's gonna be 14 feet wide.
14 wide, yeah.
Yeah, it's, right now, the garage, from the garage that's attached to the house to the property line is 19.3 foot.
So it's gonna be 14, and it's only 5 feet, no, it's, it's actually 5 feet.
Yeah, so 5 plus 3 is, the carport's there, right?
No.
No.
Oh, it's not, okay, 'cause it made, on here, it makes it sound like it is. Yeah, okay.
It says legalize, but it's not that.
What's the next item?
The next item is, oh, left side paver walk, I removed this actually, so this one is, there was some pavers in front of the, um, of the cellar cover, I removed that.
Okay.
So that's removed?
5 feet now.
Oh, so you take that one out, and it's, okay, next?
It's allowed 6, but it's 5 foot, right?
But he's taking it out, so it's...
It's already taken out.
Is that part of the reduction in coverage that you spoke about, to get out from under the dry well? Probably would be, yeah.
I, I took it out, it just was, uh, it just a strip of paint, yes.
You're, you're talking about the left one, right? The right side is still there, the one that goes to your in-laws, right?
Yeah, now it's still there.
Are there any more variances you're letting out?
There's the, the right side paver.
We talked about that. Is that connected to homes?
Sorry?
The right side is connecting to all. So we've gone through all the variances, what is the items that you are not gonna build in order to get the approval of the engineer? You've got under the additional 500-foot of impervious, which takes you out of the requirement for a...
Building cover.
Dry well. All right, so what have you taken, eliminated?
Okay, so the 59 square feet cellar cover entrance, I want to legalize that, so that's the 59. 41 square feet, that one, I'm gonna reduce it to 416, what? I'm, I'm gonna reduce it to 416, right, so I'm gonna do a little less.
416, 416.
So then, and these are the 20.
Okay, say that again, you're gonna reduce the carport to what?
4...
416, that's what it is, from the 418.
What's the dimension now?
481.
481.
Okay, you're gonna reduce it down to what?
416.
416.
Okay.
Tom, what's, what's the normal width of the garage?
12.
You, you've got this tree that's, that's blocking your access, and you have to build it, build the carport wider to get around the tree. If you took that big tree down and, and cut the 14-foot down to 11-foot, you would pick up 3 feet on the side yard.
I don't wanna cut down the tree.
We didn't wanna save the tree.
Well, you know, there's a lot of things I'd like too, but...
So you're suggesting cut a tree?
Just for a couple of foot yard?
Well, you know, to be honest with you, that tree so close to the house would scare the Jesus out of me. It's a what?
There's so many trees, I wish we could cut so many trees, it's planted trees, and they could cut all the house, so I wouldn't be...
You know, when I moved into my house, I had about 35 trees on my property 52 years ago, do you know how many I got left? 3.
That's sad.
Why? Because they all, there was an ash tree, there were trees that were eaten by, uh, carpenter ants, died in one form or another, um...
I understand, I understand.
And, and I've had, I've had 2 trees come down, one hit my house and one hit my neighbor's house, I would be scared.
If I can say, so I'm, I'm in a fear of the tree, okay, but the plan is not to cut the tree, the plan is to...
I don't know if I can be in favor of 3-foot setback on a carport, when you have a neighbor next door.
Is there, is there a engineering reason between the, what's the reason behind?
The side yards? What's the reason for side yards? Light and air?
It's 5 feet, actually, it's 5 feet, it's not 5 feet, it's not...
Still not correct, it's still not meeting the standard.
It could be eight feet.
It still doesn't meet the standard of the ordinance. The reason for a side yard setback is to have light and air, and it also goes to the character of the community.
How many houses in Mount Tabor have that kind of setback? We have looked the other way on Mount Tabor variances for as long as I've been on this board. This is the first time, I mean, I'm not saying anything egregious here. The guy has done more investigating than almost any residential applicant that's come this way. He can speak to this application so well, I'm just, I'm trying to find an issue, I just don't see it, it's a variance.
Dave, this man has a conforming law. Ninety-nine percent of our...
That I didn't realize.
Ninety-nine percent of the Mount Tabor applications are postage stamps.
Okay, fair point, I didn't realize that.
Thirty-two lots, you know, so...
I have a question. How far from your property line is your mother-in-law's house?
They have a driveway, like, we have the, our house is here.
Right.
You're looking at the back of our house, so if you're looking at the front of our house, our house is here. This is where Marco would like to do the carport, then you have my parents' driveway, and then you have my parents' garage and house.
It's their neighbors, so they two driveways, they're not basically...
So...
Is that clear what I said, or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so it's a fair distance?
Yes. If you want, I can...
He's trying to make a sidewalk to his mother-in-law's house, most people will put up a wall between them and their mother-in-law's house. I mean, let's work with him here.
And my children use it all the time, so I am very appreciative of it.
How long your parents live next year? I mean, how many years they are there?
What was the question? Since nineteen eighty-four or two, nineteen eighty-four. And it was my great-grandparents' house before that, so if you're going back, it actually goes back family-wise for quite a while.
Good, good to see you. It's still, it's still minimum.
I just not seeing a big ask.
I think we should approve it subject to a letter from the engineer.
I agree.
All right, why don't we give the members of the public a chance to ask questions?
Okay.
Are there any members of the public who have questions of this, of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? Questions, please come forward. Let them use one of the microphones, please.
Sir, just for the record, please state your name and address. You don't, you're not gonna be sworn in, just state your name.
William Harrison, Peabody, one two eight O, Keetic, California.
Please have a seat. And what is your question?
Well, I'm the owner and trustee of One Hundred Morris Avenue, which is the house below Ninety Morris Avenue.
Okay.
Is that the house on the left, if you're looking at their house?
Yeah, on the left. It's the last house on Mount Tabor before you get into the woods, so it's the very bottom of the hill.
Okay.
My father built the house in nineteen forty-eight.
Sir, I don't need you to testify right now, I need you to ask a question of this witness, okay?
My concern...
Your question?
Question.
My concern.
Is, you built the cover over the cellar entrance, and the setback from that is only four feet from my property line. In addition to that...
What's the question?
The question is, did you build a drain pipe from your cellar onto my property?
You have to come up and use the microphone.
The pipe that is referring to, it's an old pipe, I verified with the engineer that that pipe is dry. There's no water in that pipe, if you're concerned about that pipe.
Did you build that pipe, or was it there?
I put it there a long time ago, yeah, yes, yes, it's there, but it's dry, completely dry.
Would you be willing to fill it?
I'll remove it, I'll remove it. I'll remove it. It's dry, I'll remove it for the maximum. I verified with the engineer, again, Brandon Kreiser, the pipe is dry, bone dry, and there's no water coming from there.
Okay.
And it serves no purpose?
Serves no purpose, I can remove it, cap it, I can do...
Why did you put it there?
Because at the beginning, where there was no cover cellar, cellar cover.
So the cover negates the need for the pipe?
Yes, the pipe can be totally removed, I'm working on it.
Okay.
So is the water from the cover is going in a different pipe or something?
The water from the cover as a gather system, it goes into the downspout into the stormwater drain. There's no water coming from the cover.
Okay.
So there's no water into that pipe officially.
But you're willing to remove it?
I'll remove it, absolutely.
Any other questions?
Did you...
You might wanna just stay up there.
You better stay up here.
Did you recently add additional downspouts to the cover over your cellar door?
I think you just said he did that. I think I did that. To avoid any water runoff to your property, I added, I spent some money to put a gather line and downspout. I'm legalizing the cover, so I'm worried about the permit.
You don't need a permit.
For gathers, for them.
I'd like to bring my property damage around and address some of the issues.
No, you can't do that now.
That'll be later.
Questions, questions, what are your questions?
My question is, why do you have the cover built the way you have it built instead of building a legal cover over the... Over the entrance to the cellar?
Will you define legal cover?
Yeah, please.
Well, the way he built that, it comes out within four feet of my property line.
Thank you.
Approximately how far from that cover, approximately how far away is your house?
My house is... From the cover?
From the cover, yeah.
My house, my property line or my house?
House.
My house is sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet, okay.
Five one feet to the cover.
So tell us why you built the cover the way you built it?
The reason for that, it's because there is, I need to slope, there is a, it's sloped, the ground slopes towards my house. So I need to add a cover, there is at least a feet to overcome that slope, otherwise...
And you're saying that there's no drainage from that cover going towards his property?
No, no.
Okay.
Does the cover, where the water comes off the cover, does, and your property, this top of your cellar stairs, okay? To my property, is that twelve or fifteen feet downhill towards my property?
What is it? I don't understand the question.
Okay, from the top of your cellar stairs, where you exit your cell...
Yeah, yeah.
To my property, that's twelve feet straight downhill to my property?
Thirteen foot four.
Okay, thirteen feet.
Thirteen foot four, yeah, minus eight. Minus eight, five foot four, five foot four.
Water comes down off of his cover onto my property.
Is that true?
No. Yeah, he says A1.
Give him to the attorney.
This is the cover. It's got a gather system that goes into the water, the storm drain.
So, and this is what you built, this is the...
No, no, this is that, just, I'll show the engineer, every gather in my house goes to the, it doesn't go to the, goes to there. To the inlet B.
They even poured water down into the drains when he came.
Where does the water end up? In a drainage system?
The street, yeah.
To the street.
So you've got underground piping connecting to the thing?
Yeah, every gather line in my house...
Connects to the street.
Goes to the street, and I poured water with the engineer, I hope you can...
I don't know about it. Any other questions?
I'll remove the pipe.
No other questions?
Dry pipe.
Thank you.
You can come back later.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to ask questions of these witnesses on testimony given this evening? Nobody else?
Nobody else.
Do you have a question?
Do you have a question? Do you have a question? Well, come up here and ask the question, please, very simple.
Sir, please, state, sir.
I'm sorry, what's your name? Oh, I remember you. I thought you looked familiar.
Yes, and you too.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of Mr. Harrison.
That's fine, just if you have a question to ask, please ask.
How can you build this structure?
Do me a favor, grab the mic and pull it closer.
How can you build this structure from two thousand eighteen till the president, president, without a permit?
Not an acceptable question. He's here to rectify that.
The drainage pipe onto the property you put there?
I'm removing it.
Three feet onto his property?
Let's remove it.
Yeah.
Is that true?
It is, yeah, it's fixed out there, I didn't know.
Wait a minute, is this the pipe you were gonna remove anyway?
Yes.
He said he was gonna remove that pipe.
Mr. Harrison objects for this structure on his side of the property.
I don't want you testifying, you've gotta ask questions. This is a very simple process. This is your opportunity to ask questions of the witnesses. We will give you a chance to testify under oath once the applicant's presentation is finished. Very simple.
We don't need any of these?
Now, at this point, if you have evidence to present, you can do that during the, your testimony. Any other questions? Any other members of the public have any questions of this witness on a testimony given this evening? Do you have any other?
Question for you, Mr. Harrison.
Sure.
Can we get a chance to come back and speak about this?
We're gonna give you an opportunity, once his application is finished, we'll give you an opportunity to speak.
Harrison traveled three thousand miles for this meeting to talk to you guys.
Well, you know what, I gave up an evening with my wife, today's my wedding anniversary, so don't give me any of that crap, okay? Thank you.
All right, but this is the second time, because the last meeting was canceled out, now he's here again.
No, we didn't cancel the meeting, he had to come back with more information.
You didn't complain to me, you could come to me and talk.
Excuse me, I'm the referee.
You can come back and testify in a few minutes, okay? Okay. Do you have any more questions?
No, that's it.
Does the board have any more questions of this witness?
Can I show something?
Excuse me?
Can I show something?
Yes.
You have to mark it.
We just have to mark it. Bring it over to the attorney.
Is this A2?
No, this is a...
So these are multiple pictures?
Yeah, that's the property next door, complaining of my water runoff, I just wanna point out that all this water goes to...
So you wanna mark which ones? Both of these? I have to mark these, I have to give each of these pictures a number.
Introduce the evidence.
Oh, okay. So you wanna put these, you wanna talk about two of these two pictures, I'm gonna mark?
And we keep them.
This one as A2? This one is A3?
Are these pictures taken by you?
A4 is two.
Were they taken recently?
Yeah.
And they represent the conditions today?
Yeah.
Okay. So you wanna testify about this now? What do they show?
I just wanna protect myself here, because if my neighbor said that there is water runoff going to his house from my property, I'd like to point out that all his gather lines goes to his property and onto the street. And during water storms, during storms, all the gather lines get filled out with water, there's leaves in it, there's growing weeds.
If I may?
That's the problem.
These gutters are like this?
This gutter that you see going into the ground, that's coming off from his garage. And those gutters right there that you can see, when it rains a lot, it goes, falls off the edge, but it goes down into that pipe, and then that pipe goes into the ground, which is his property. So part of the problem is the drainage system, which is falling here into their yard.
You want to see this, Josh? Do you care? I don't know if they show anything.
I see the pipe.
That's A1, 2, 3, and 4.
Okay, move it down. One. It's your anniversary, move it on.
Do you have any more testimony?
I don't.
So I guess they're done, Mr. Chairman, you wanna...
Hey, you're...
My mother says she didn't have anything that she wanted to ask.
She's not objecting.
Well, she'd have to say it for herself, but don't worry about it. We don't wanna cause any, we don't wanna cause any family feuds.
All right.
She's not here to object, so it's okay.
Okay, now, someone's gonna have to go up and sit, so one of you have to give up your, other ones stay there, though.
Okay, I'll stay here.
All right, at this point, is there any member of the public that would like to speak in opposition to this application? And this is your opportunity, if you wanna speak in opposition, please come forward, we'll swear you in, and you can make whatever presentation you want about tonight's case.
Sir, now I have to swear you, and you raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about to give before the board's troops, the troops are helping God.
Yes, I do.
And for the record, you have to state your name and address.
Yes. Norman Chapman, One Long Road, Dendel, New Jersey.
All right, you're sworn, have a seat.
As I said, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Harrison, who's not present all year, I manage his property for him. He came home about two years ago to look around, we walked his property, and we saw what's going on next door. He or I are not against these people at all, they're very fine people, for sure. What we are against, what's going on on the right side of his house with the driveway, is none of our concern. Not worried about that, that's between the engineers and them, okay, drainage. What's going on on the left side, this structure, which I have pictures of, and I'm gonna hand them out, that is a problem. It's not acceptable. They have a thirteen, thirteen feet four inches setback to the house, their property line. They are eight feet four inches over into the setback, all right, five feet off the property line, we have survey, it's filled up. Okay? That is a problem. This could be done, he wants a structure over the door, all right? I'm a building contractor, fifty-one years, I'm registered and licensed in the state of New Jersey to build new homes. I have expertise in this field, all right? He could build a three-foot shed roof over this freestanding with no legs going down and attach it to the house, and it will serve the purpose, okay? A gable or a shed roof leaning in. He has three feet to work with that will do the job. No variances needed, all he needs is a building permit to do it, done, no problem. God bless him. But this structure that I'm gonna show you is not acceptable.
Can we see this, put me in here? Subjective one?
Yeah, oh one.
Okay, we're gonna mark this as O1? Look, spread them out as much as you can.
Pictures are numerical, okay? And I have a readout for every picture there.
Do we have more than one copy of the picture?
And what's going on on either side of it, all right?
So you have multiple, you have multiple pictures?
Yes.
How many pictures do you have in O1?
I'm sorry?
How many pictures do you have in O1? Nine pictures, O1, there are nine pictures.
Okay. The second page on the cover, it shows Harrison's property.
Are these existing conditions you're showing us?
I don't...
Yeah.
Can I see them, please?
Yeah.
Which photo?
Cause it doesn't look like what he presented, does it?
Yeah, thanks.
I think it looks like the old side.
If I go from picture number one, it's a picture that shows the front corner as the road's edge. Because of what was going on there, Harrison brought in the surveyor because he didn't know where his property line was. Me, with my knowledge, I said I'm sure that he's in the setback, there's no way, but he didn't know, so I said you gotta get a survey. The survey stake is in the front corner, that's page, picture number one. Picture number two is a picture of you of the enclosure in relation to the property line. If you look at number two, you can look all the way up to the road's edge and see the front marker there.
You can see a stake right there?
Yes.
Okay.
Please don't talk, please.
Harrison's survey shows this enclosure being five feet from the property line. Harrison's survey shows this enclosure being five feet from the property line. The brick pavers in front of it are eight and twelve inches away from the property line. Do you not have a stop work order? If you, you to stop this, you were not allowed to touch those pavers or put a gutter on that structure. You're in violation right there. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just telling you.
Thanks.
Don't tell me that you removed them. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Picture number three shows a side view looking at the structure, and you can see the stake how close this thing is to his property line.
Around them.
Very simple. Picture number four shows a view from Harrison's property. The circle shows the location of a disguised four-inch PVC drain pipe, which extends approximately three feet onto Harrison's property.
It will be removed.
Okay?
That is the one you said removed?
Yes.
Do you see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
The one that...
Picture number five is a close-up of the cover used to hide this drain pipe with a sixteen, an eight-inch by sixteen-inch landscape stone.
Okay.
So that was purposely put there so nobody knew what was underneath.
Okay.
Picture number six. Once we remove it, that shows the exposed four-inch PVC drain pipe on Harrison's property. Again, three feet over the line. And that distributes water. I don't care what you say or anybody says.
Okay.
The reason why that's there is to drain water.
The engineer did it.
Okay, very simple. Harrison spent a couple of years ago near ten thousand dollars to dry his basement up. Waterproofed all the walls down there because it's cinder block construction and it's porous. Sealed all the walls. Then brought people in, and we cut the floor and put two sub-pits on each end with a French drain. His basement is now completely dry. And these people do this and run the drain onto his property. Not acceptable, no good, okay?
Mr. Chapman, can I ask you a question here?
Yes, sir.
Would you say that's more of a storage shed than it is a cover over a door?
He remarked to me when he saw that it looks like a tree for a bunch of kids built in the woods. I'm not trying to be funny, but come on, give me a break.
Yeah, it's pretty primitive looking.
Right? Primitive is not the word.
I'm sorry. I'm not a builder. I'm a...
I'm not a builder.
Picture number seven is a picture of this exposed PVC drain pipe leading into the enclosure and facing the door.
Oh.
In number seven, you can see right where it goes in that enclosure, in the basement door, where there's a drain, okay?
That's covered.
Number eight is a picture of the eight-by-sixteen-inch landscape stone used to cover this pipe. Who put there to hide that pipe, all right?
It's obvious. It's obvious, Mr. Chapman.
Number nine is a picture of eight-by-sixteen landscape stones piled in their property, not ten feet away. So am I to believe that that stone got up and walked over there and placed it on? Somebody put it there. You know? I'm not trying to point fingers and I'm not trying to be mean.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Is your client only concerned about the store, this shed? If he, if we were to do something with the shed, he would not have a problem with anything else they're doing?
None whatsoever.
Would you consider, would you consider as part of this application to take that shed down?
No, I'm sorry. I cannot, because that will create an issue with my basement.
No, you just heard Mr. Chapman say you put a roof over it. You've got a storage shed. You don't have a cover over a door. You've got a storage shed there.
I'll take everything out.
Well, I can be honest with you. I'm not gonna prove it. I'm not gonna vote for it. So you better start coming up with a compromise.
But what's right is right. Would you want this next to your house?
Am I wrong?
So you're the property man. Is there, is there water now from their property draining onto your property?
There was at one time.
No, that's not my question. Is there now because of this pipe?
I'm not sure. I don't go there and even look at it.
Okay. So the pipe, the pipe obviously drained water at one time. It probably drained water onto his property. He's already testified that. The water, the pipe, according to our engineer now, has not got any water going through it. If he takes the pipe out, does that alleviate the problem of the water?
If he wants to put a drain there of some sort, he should put a...
Okay, now, but, but if he agrees to take the water, the pipe out of there, as he's testified, he would do.
All the way to the house, out?
Yes, yes, I agree. I'll take the pipe out.
Wait a minute.
Yeah. All the way to the out, you didn't say that.
And that enclosure down. That's not...
Excuse me. You testified that you had all the leaders going into underground pipe directly to the street. Now, current, yes?
That's right.
So the issue of this addition isn't a drainage issue anymore, at least based on his testimony. Do you believe that's correct?
I can show you.
I think this addition could be done, and I know, I don't think.
No, I'm not going to the...
That's not the question.
What the addition? The water comes off that construction
Roof.
is now in a underground drainage system going straight to the street?
I don't see any system there or cistern to run the water in or a dry well. That's how you need to use that problem.
He didn't say that.
So it's all running down onto his door again, yes?
That...
When you would, when you give me an opportunity. But the problem I have is, the applicant is asking for a cover over... The reason this is is because it's a cover over a door.
No.
But if you look at these pictures, does it look like a cover over a door? Or does it look like a storage?
And the other thing is, he testified that he understands and wants to preserve the character of Mount Taber, and I don't see how that does that.
Doesn't have to have the character of Mount Taber.
No.
Then there's no, there's no reason why we should grant a three-foot setback for something that is not what the applicant has testified to. It's not, it's not a roof over a door.
Can I speak?
We objected to the five-foot setback or whatever. It's not needed. He can put a three-foot roof over that doorway, and he's done.
I explained.
Not yet.
This structure is not needed, no. He's over, he's well into the setback there, well into it. If not for that, we wouldn't be here. They're nice people, I'm not trying to hurt them.
Do you have any questions of this witness?
Yes, well, I would like to explain because one respond the character of Mount Taber. I didn't finish the shed because it's the shed, the cover. I'm gonna put like boards.
It's a shed, don't call it a cover over a door. It's a shed, you got some board in there.
There isn't because it's so long. It's because the house, the ground is sloping towards the, towards the door. If I make it three feet, I don't solve the issue.
Make it four feet.
If I make it four feet, I don't solve the issue. I made it eight feet because...
Because you can brace it back into the house or hang it on the house. You don't need any posts or walls on the side at all.
A native structure.
So he could put, he could put a three-foot shed with, with, a three-foot thing with sides and a door, and he would solve the problem?
If he wanted, three feet is acceptable.
Now, but I'm just saying, would that solve the problem of water going in to his house?
I don't think so. Without some sort of drain system or bring it out to the road or, you know, a dry well, cistern, or whatever.
He said he already did that.
He did that? I don't see it.
Chairman, can I, can I say something here?
Yeah, sure.
Regarding this?
Okay.
I, I spent about thirty minutes at this site today looking at what's going on because it's so complicated
Mm-hmm.
on the drawing, okay? What the objective is saying is not going to work, okay? The reason being, I looked at the length of the, that area cover is about seven feet or whatever it is. The ground is sloping towards the door, okay?
Sloping towards the door?
Ground.
Ground.
The ground is, you know, sloping towards the door to the cellar. So if you put three feet or four feet roof over that, the water is still going to come to the...
Is there any way that, any way that the, the ground could be regraded to...
There is a sewer line.
There's a sewer line.
That's a little bit higher.
Sewer line?
There's a sewer line.
Going in front of that, you know, cellar cover. So the ground is like sloping towards the cellar.
It's there, well, it's there, towards my house.
Let me finish talking, please, thank you. So that is why it needs to cover the side too, because the water can come. Main reason is, is the sloping towards the door, and that's how the water comes in. I just wanted to explain to you because, you know...
The topography is like...
Unless you go there, you don't see that, that there is about seven feet of slope of the ground going towards the door.
Where's the stairs?
There, here, there, you can see it.
The door is low grave. There's stairs.
The hurdle and the structure, the... Does the footing go down forty-two inches?
I'm not sure about that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about that. Do you?
Are you sure about stairs?
Been performing, driving. I don't know, I don't see it.
Hold on a sec, please.
You see, the door is lower, so you got stairs going from here down.
But the drainage is this way?
Yeah, but this...
So you built this yourself?
Yes, well, my wife was pregnant.
Yeah, but it's a home.
It was the first time.
Yeah.
So she was drying, drying water on her side of the basement.
So you didn't get any permission or anything, you just threw this thing out?
Absolutely.
To keep the water. Now, his testimony is, are you testifying now that this is caused, you're getting water on your property from his property from this addition? Is that what your testimony is?
We were, and it could be coming even without...
No, it's not, we were. Since he put that on, he says they had the drain pipe tested, and it wasn't doing anything. Okay? So is this, you're testifying now that because of the size of the structure, it's causing water from his property going to your property?
Yeah. Why is it concealed that pipe?
The pipe he's taking out.
It's dry.
He's taking the pipe out.
The pipe is gone in the picture.
He concealed the pipe because it wasn't appropriate to have it, so he tried to hide it. He admitted that.
Trying to hide some.
He was trying to hide some, so now he's taking it out.
May I speak for one second?
You may.
The pipe being covered like that is preventing the kids from tripping over it. And when you did take it out, it rained a lot that day, and then there was a big puddle right underneath your said pipe. When the stone was there and the wood was there, it was as if it was just more grass and it was a solid area. When they got it out...
Excuse me, excuse me, you cannot speak. You're not under oath. You can, I'm sorry. You have a representative who can talk for you. If you wanna testify, you have to come up and get sworn in. Thank you.
I do wanna hear the answer to Mr. Willens's question. It was asked it three times, and we still don't have an answer. Have you had water on the property since he built this? As ugly as it is, have you had water? It's a yes or no.
Absolutely, yeah. How could you not? They're up above us.
Well, they're still gonna be up above you, no matter what kind of structure they put.
Correct.
If they had a drainage or a pit where it ran into, it would be no problem.
So what, so what he has done is he took a gutter and ran the downspout into his existing downspouts, which goes out to the... Well, the engineer is supposed to review that. He's gonna submit a letter, and any approval here is subject to the engineer's letter based upon drainage, water being not sent to your client's property, but out to the road where he testified. He testified that all his gutters and leaders are hooked up and go out to the store. Is that correct, Mr.?
So all go out to the street? All your gutters go out to the street?
Yes.
Yes.
To the drainage of where the gutters used to be.
There is pipes under the house.
Is the engineer brand on your test street? Verified that?
Yeah, we thought water physically...
This gutter over here on this side?
Yeah.
That's... This gutter goes out to the street?
It goes to the street, yep.
How does it go out to the street?
Underground.
Underground, that's the street.
So there's a pipe coming out at the...
It goes to like where the gutters, Mount Taber used to have gutters that were like this on the side. Now it's a covered, straight, street area, so you don't see the pipe. The pipe is going to the underground area where the drainage, like the indoor hole is... No, it goes to where the water runs for the... Like, don't drop a finger.
That's where it's gonna be.
You can't see anybody.
Mr. Chapman, Mr. Chapman, there are stairs in this picture.
Yes, sir.
The stairs are clearly in the, in the setback.
That's correct, sir.
Do you have any problems with those stairs?
Anything that's in the setback is wrong, you know?
I know it's wrong, but does that affect your, your client's property in any way?
If I talk to him and he has a problem with it, I'm gonna let you know. I work for him.
Okay, okay, okay.
I'm here for myself.
So there's, there's... Mr. Casey, Mr. Faric said that he looked at this property,
So, there's, there, Mr. Casey, Mr. Faric said that he looked at this property, and I don't quite understand what, what's going on, but this, this structure, which goes 10 feet into the setback.
Yeah.
Right? I don't understand why something couldn't be done alongside the stairs to prevent the water from going in. A small wall or something like that, right? You raise this wall up, which is much less intrusive if your client has no problem with the stairs, and then cut this back so it's not in the setback.
Okay, there is a water, there's water lines, is that it?
I understa, no, you don't have to move these stairs.
So I cannot slope down the direction.
No, no, what I'm saying is you just put a little, some medium here to prevent the water from going around into the, into the doorway and build a smaller system and use the existing gutters.
There is a gutter now. It's an old picture. It's been, it's been a gutter.
Yeah, but this thing's ugly. This thing's 10, this thing's 10 feet into the setback. That's the problem I have, and you don't need it. You don't need this thing 10 feet into the setback. Because you, you don't need it because you're using it as a storm shed.
Why don't we send them back and say, go get a professional, bring us back a plan that's aesthetically pleasing, that's out of the setback and that's functional? Or, if he doesn't want to do that, we vote no.
I think you have to come up with an alternative to that storage shed. And don't tell me it's a cover over a door, because it's not.
It's, can I say, it's a, it's a cover. It became a storage, no, I've been putting stuff there.
It's 10 feet into the setback and it doesn't need to be there. Okay?
It has to be there.
It's 10 feet into the setback.
Water will go in because it's.
Oh, my God. Well, get an engineer to tell, or an architect to tell you how you could build something that won't be into the setback. Because if you have a, a, the proper drainage and the proper grading, you can put it into a drywall. Mr. Chapman, am I telling wrong? I'm in, I'm a CPA, I'm not a builder, but I've been doing this for 34 years. I've heard a lot, a lot of stories.
Listen, this one thing that I've learned is, there is a way to engineer water, no matter what the situation is. I have yet to see someone come here and say, it cannot be done. You might not like the cost. I get that. Okay, I, I respect that. But the reality is, you're asking for something for which you're not entitled, to which you're not entitled. So, and what you did to save money isn't acceptable to the neighbor, and it doesn't seem to be acceptable to the board. So the solution here is, you're going to have to pay. I'm sorry.
For engineering some.
Either an engineer that says it's impossible, which, good luck, or a landscape engineer to, to make it so that you're satisfied, the neighbor's satisfied, and the zoning is satisfied.
The PVC pipe that's exposed there runs right to his basement door where there's a.
He said he's going to remove that.
It's removed. It's dry. Engineer said it's dry.
He's going to remove it. It's been there.
No.
It's been there.
Because it's dry, because it's dry. Let me ask you a question, Mr. Chapman. Would you be willing to help him out a little bit to?
You know, I could. I'm 74 years old. I'm trying to retire.
So am I. I'm older than you. So, I'm older than you and I'm still trying to retire.
I will, we're both.
Well, you're lost cause.
It was a tire.
No, I mean, just.
I could draw that picture for him with a, in a heartbeat. No problem.
The answer is yes, you could help.
The structure is not acceptable. It's not pleasing to the eye. It's horrible.
Would you, would you be willing to let Mr. Chapman help you out with, with some?
He can come and suggest stuff, but I, I've been willing to meet with him. He, he was very rude, actually. Refused to.
He has 13 feet or 4 inches from his house.
He's very rude.
So.
He didn't want to talk.
Zoning requires a 10-foot setback.
Now he wants to talk.
He has 3 feet or inches, so if he had 3.
Even if he went 5 feet.
Or 4 feet.
2, 2 feet or 1 foot into the.
Does he need a variance for that extra foot over?
I'm.
He needs a, still need a variance, yes, yes.
4 feet, that's enough. There's plenty of cover. He's not going to get snow there.
And now, if, if, if the, if the design required something with the stairs that may be intruded into the setback a little bit to prevent water from coming around, and again, I'm just talking like what I've seen from pictures.
A landscape architect would cure that, for sure. No?
I will, you're sure.
What do you want to do, Mr. Chaplin? What do you want to do?
So, so we have two issues. We have two problems, right? One side of the house, the other side of the house, right? So, the seller coverage on these.
Nobody, nobody has come forward to complain about any of your application except that shed. So are you willing to take a second look at the shed?
I'm willing to.
I'm not going to call it a cover. It's a shed, okay?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, you're willing to take.
I'll remove the stuff from inside the shed. It becomes again a cover. And then, and then I'll look again. I'll relook at that. Absolutely.
You're going to hurt yourself on your testimony. You gotta, you gotta change the shed. You're not going to change the shed, we're not going to approve it.
It's not a shed.
Okay.
Done.
Nora, when can we carry this case to?
May I say one thing?
Yeah.
The, the reason why he built the coverage was for the water. I was pregnant, due in two months. There was tons of water. He was able to do this.
Great.
Figure out the problem. Five years later, we're having a problem again.
Well, because you did it without a permit. That's not our fault. You know, you know what I'm trying to convince the council to do? I'm trying to convince the council to, to penalize people who come here after the fact.
I'll relook.
To issue a penalty, because we have too many cases of people building stuff and then coming and figuring, well, it's easier to ask for forgiveness, send it as permission. And you know what? It's getting to the point where it's not easier to ask for forgiveness. Nora, when can we carry this case to?
December 20th.
December 20th. Without any notice and without any further notice, you're going to have to give us an extension of time. I don't know if you have to come back from California, because Mr. Chapman, I mean, I've heard him before this, I mean, I go black 34 years, and I'm sure you go back about the same amount of time.
I recognize the rest, but I do.
So, so are you willing to give an extension of the application until we can, you can resolve the issue with the cover?
You have to give us an extension of time. You'll, otherwise we'll vote no tonight and then you start from ground zero.
Again.
Then he can't have it.
Right.
No, he can submit the revised plan or something.
It's over, it's over. All right, so you have to formally give Ms. Jolie a, a, a letter of, of extension.
But you will do that, correct?
Okay.
And for the record, you have to say yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion to carry this case to December 20th? Any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed?
So is the carport also, do I need to, is this only, is it just the other, or can I go ahead with anything else?
Yeah, go with anything.
With anything, again.
Uh-oh.
Everything else is probably going to be okay. Everything else is probably going to be okay, but it's not hold.
Yeah, nobody seems to have a problem with anything else.
It's not hold until everything else.
And, and you know what? There may not be a drainage problem, but I feel there's a setback problem. Because I don't think, and I'm not a builder, but I, just looking at this thing, a good landscape architect would, would tell you how you can build it so that it's a third of the size.
I understand.
Okay?
It's not finished.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I can finish it.
We'll see you in December.
If you give me the opportunity, I can finish it. I understand it looks ugly.
Enjoy your time in California. I, I hope your governor out there.
My family lived in Mount Haven for over 100 years.
I, I hope your governor out there in, in California takes good care of you. What part, what part of California?
I live outside of Lake Hita. Palm, Palm Desert.
Oh, okay, okay. No, you don't have to come back. As long as Mr. Chapman comes back. You better come back, yes.
But you're going to work with him and try to resolve the issue. You, you two will work and talk and try to resolve the issue.
I'll draw something up and bring it back on the 20th of December.
No, give it to him.
Draw something up and show it to him and see if it works. I can draw something.
No, no.
Come over, come over.
Help, help him out. Help him out so that, you know, he can live peacefully.
The more you guys talk, the less we have to.
Which we tried doing at the last meeting, when he said, please talk amongst yourselves, and we had a, they said they didn't want to talk about that.
We reached out.
All right, that's all, that's the problem. We, we made our decision.
Sorry about it.
Okay.
It's a process.
Yep. Application 2339, Vivien Chauhan, 1128 South Beverick Road, C-Vareance, Don Solis Shed, 6-foot-high solid fence.
We have to.
We have to keep him.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything you gave us, it was evidence. Good evening.
Who's going to testify?
Both of you?
20th.
If you could raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony about the report you got. And for the record, can you state your next?
Yeah, I'll just have my supplies.
Yeah, ma'am? And how do you spell your MP?
Yeah.
And you are the owners of the subject property? Okay, you're sworn. Have a seat. Please speak into the microphone, Mr. Chapman. Witnesses are sworn.
Okay, so, we need some variances, yards and courts, yards and courts, fences and walls, fences and walls, yards and courts, and building coverage. You want to tell us what you'd like to do and why you want to do it?
I don't think that relationship's.
So, yeah, we would like to install a shed and install a 6-foot-high fence around the corner.
Do you speak up, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We would like to install a shed and install a 6-foot-high fence around the
corner, like, because we have a small kids and our corner lot is mainly attached, like, attached to the main road, the South Beverick Road, and so because of the children's safety, we would like to have a 6-foot-high fence.
Your house new construction?
Huh?
New construction, was just built? You just bought it recently?
Yes.
Okay. We don't approve 6-foot-high fences.
Let's get straight. Well, I see where the 6-foot.
It's, it's, it's got two front yards.
Yeah, so part of it is.
It's a lumber.
Okay, 4 and 1/2 foot, the 4-foot, but the piece that comes back around isn't. Any reason that you can't continue the 4-foot-tall, 50% open along South Beverick Road?
Just for the security, if you can ask me. Also, because we have seen, just for the security, also like we have kids and we have noticed that people are facepassing or they are taking pictures. Also, we have, we have been, my dad was working on the yard. Someone came on the road and they have snuck out a stain. The police complained for the stain. We were planning to put a 6-foot high, so no one can even see that kids are over there.
How about, how about a 5-foot-high fence and the top foot is open? It's lattice or blocks. I can tell you, we don't approve 6-foot fences. Not 6-foot solid, 6-foot fences. They're just, they're not, they're not attractive.
5-foot.
5-foot, 4-foot high, and then 1 foot of lattice. You've got a lot of privacy. The only other thing we're going to request is you put some landscaping on the outside. Now, you don't have to build, put big tall shrubs, but we want you to make it look, look presentable on the outside. I understand you're on, you're on a main street there. I understand that. And we're only talking about a short area here, John, this part here. Just, yeah. You've got, you've got a lot of privacy. The lattice, it's, it's just like having a solid foot. And it just looks nicer, and with a little bit of landscaping, you get some, you know, again, you're going to have to get shrubbery that's not going to be eaten by the deer. So if you have any questions about that, we have a town forester. You can go to the town forester. You can talk to him, you know, something that's not, that's native, but not a, a deer's deer salad, you know?
Okay.
We like to accommodate, but if you look, and, and people have put up 6-foot-high solid fences without permits here, and they're ugly. They really are.
And they come down.
And, and.
Can you go 5 and 1?
No, 4 and 1.
The reason behind is like, because sometimes like we have to see that people just jump 5 feet up.
No, you know, you know, you've got a house on a main street. That's not our problem, okay? We're, you know, and unfortunately, you have a house that has two front yards. Okay?
That we understood. So only problem, like, we were not thinking about it until that accident happened at all. Someone just.
You, you know, you.
But you didn't have a fence up there.
The other thing.
So that, was this, was this fence that accident wanted to happen?
The other, the other thing you can consider is put something like a Norway spruce on the outside. Put a series of Norway spruces. You don't have a lot of, a lot of distance. Norway spruce, if you put a 6 or 8-foot Norway spruce up, they grow at a, at a, at a foot a year, and they fill in. And eventually, you won't even, you won't even need the fence because you'll have a natural barrier. That's an alternative. All right, I'm not saying you have to do that. I have a Norway spruce.
You just have to watch how close to the curb. You can't put a Norway spruce at the curb where cars are trying to block in the line of sight.
I.
Okay, let's move ahead. That's for another day, isn't it?
He's off the line. The fence is off.
Yeah.
Again, that's something that you talked to the town forester about. The other thing you want is a shed. Now, you want the shed, 1 foot in, in the, yeah, that doesn't sound like it's a significant. You've, you've got kind of a funky piece of property. You don't have much of a backyard, do you?
No.
I know who built your house. I know him very well.
You don't have any stairs under your shed, do you?
Nobody's complaining about the shed.
No, it's not done yet. We are going to build it once it's done. And put it in together because fence, fence is all in part.
Yeah, got it. And you notified your neighbors and you've had no complaints. They haven't said, don't put the shed in or anything like that.
Yeah, I don't think your neighbor to the back of your house is very close, is he?
They are close, but not that close. We have concrete, and on the side, we are like 60, 50 foot as well.
Yeah.
They are, they are fine with it.
Any other questions by the board?
Nope.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness, these witnesses on testimony?
Defense of block, shed anyway.
Did you say something, Bernard?
Defense of block, shed anyway.
Yeah, okay, let's move on.
All right, members of, there's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and say none. Basically, the minimalist applicant, the minimalist request, Mr. Ready, you're going to make a recommendation and you're going to make the resolution too, right?
Yes, sir. Application 23:39, 36, oh, 39, Vivien Chauhan, 1128 South Beverick Road, Block 757, Lot Number 5, Zone R-Dash 2, to issue a grant C-Vareance to install a shed and 4-foot, 5-foot, 5-foot total, 4-foot solid and 1-foot lattice. Fence contrary to Section 430-10, Section C, rear and sides, Section 430-11A and B, Section 430-10I, and Section 430-35, 10.
Second one. Any discussion, Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Chaplin.
Yes.
Faric.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willens.
Yes. Resolution, the variances granted. We'll memorialize this. Two weeks, in two weeks and you'll be free to proceed. Enjoy.
Thank you so much.
This is a very special meeting, that's why.
Austin Murphy. Mr. Chair, Austin Murphy, is that easy?
Yes, Murphy, I'm sorry.
We're still on 7 o'clock, isn't it?
Still on the 7 o'clock meeting, yes. And we're having fun. Yeah.
This is the staff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you want to swear the witness isn't?
I'm hoping all else speaks. Engineer.
Are you the attorney? Are you an attorney? You're an engineer? And you're the applicant?
I'm the homeowner here.
Okay, so who's going to testify?
Why don't you swear both of us then?
Okay, sir, raise your right hand. You swore a firm testimony about the report you got. And for the record, you're Austin Murphy, and you're the owner of the subject property.
I'm the owner.
And you've hired an engineer to help you with this application?
Yeah.
Ma'am, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear a firm testimony about the report you got?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name?
Sure. Erin Abline, E-R-I-N-A-B-L-I-N-E.
And you're an engineer?
I'm a professional engineer, yes.
All your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes.
You've been qualified either for this or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You're sworn and qualified.
Thank you. All right, I'm here.
So what do we want to do?
Would you like some quick testimony or you want to get through some questions?
Well, usually.
No, I'll testify. Be nice to be started when telling us what you want to do.
Sure. So this project proposes a driveway extension off of the existing driveway to support a future detached garage and additional parking. The property itself is all steep slopes. If you had the chance to look at the property, it drains, I'll go to, I'm going to refer to these plans. They were as submitted. Do you need me to mark them?
These are colored plans, were the plans that you submitted colored?
Yes.
Okay, and it's the same plan and you don't have to mark it?
Okay. So I'm just going to go to Sheet 4. Sheet 4 gives that enlarged site layout plan and a grading plan. I think I can speak to this only. So you'll see the existing single-family home is located in the center of this lot. There is a driveway that accesses that home. On the west side, there's an existing retaining wall. There's steep slopes, rock outcropping on that side of the property. The desire of the homeowner was to build a driveway extension, like I said, support a future detached garage. We showed it on our plans. We included our calculations in hopes that he doesn't have to come back here as long as it's a compliant building. To do that, there was an area previously disturbed. This whole site was steep slopes, I'm sure of it. There was an area previously disturbed on the east side of the home, more flat than the rest of the site. That's what we're utilizing, but we'll still need some retaining walls. So there's three retaining walls proposed, a series of tiers, walls. The maximum wall height is 5.33 feet. Two of them were 5.33 feet. The other one's a little bit shorter, so less than the 6 feet. And that's to provide that level area. There are some utility relocations that will be occurring to support this. The paint tanks will be relocated. The drywall that's supporting the existing home will be relocated. And then to address the increase in stormwater, we're putting in an underground infiltration basin. All of the future garage and the driveway will be collected via piping inlets and directed to that underground basin. The existing site, as you'll see in the grading and drainage plan, as I said, it flows from the west to the east. We are maintaining those drainage patterns. There is a head wall that leads out from the drywall that's being relocated and the infiltration basin that's being discharged to maintain those existing drainage patterns. That head wall's about 175 feet from the downstream property. It's wooded area. I don't, there to be any channelized flow or any impacts offsite.
Which, looking at the, from the street to the house, the disturbance is going to be on the right side or the left side?
On the right side.
On the right side. And a little familiar, I, unfortunately, I did not get to this piece of property, but significant amount of space between this house and the neighbor's house?
Yes.
There's not going to be any, you're not going to be looking in somebody's window or, or anything like that.
No, definitely not.
And you're going to deal with all the drainage issues. Has there been any input from the town engineer on this one? Has anybody seen anything?
Yeah, there's a letter here.
And what does he say?
It's mostly about the soil movement more than anything else.
Correct.
Do they need a, do they need a soil moving permit, Travis?
Yes, they need to address that with the engineer.
Okay, so you're, you're.
That's how we're here, yes.
We, we would, we would recommend that the council approve a soil movement.
I, I spoke to someone, was it from your office?
From my office, yeah, my project manager he spoke to.
And the question was whether that garage could be brought forward and tied into the home. And why don't you tell the board what the, you told me?
Sure. So the steep slopes of this property.
There's a lot of movement on the soil there.
Yeah, there's a lot of movement of the soil. The steep slopes on the property do have an advantage. They have a good view of the New York City skyline out that side of the house. They want to maintain that. So out of their house, rather than blocking it with a garage, they have the room with setbacks. They want to be able to see that skyline, see the woods, and not be blocked with the garage. There's no.
I'd also say that I don't want it to be a prominent feature of the property, so
that when you drive up, it doesn't change the, the nature of what the street looks like, so it will be more bad so that if you really see it from the roadway or anywhere.
Do you have a garage in your house?
Correct.
So the purpose of this garage is?
For cars, for my cars, because I'm a car enthusiast, so, um, I'm trying to maintain, uh, being married and my wife can't park in a car in the garage at the moment because I have cars stored in there that sort of on skates.
So you're a collector of cars?
Well, yeah, I'm a car enthusiast. So I, I'd like to have a spot where I can put those cars so that, that my wife can park in the garage and I still can stay in the house and not just.
I, I own three cars, my wife owns one, and I catch hell for at least weekly.
So you're putting a three-car garage to store your collectible cars in, in the back of the house, basically?
Right.
Okay. Not visible from the road, okay.
Will we, will we make sure that there is, um, proper, um, if there's, if soil is being removed or brought to the property, it will be done during business hours, Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Um, whatever rules and regulations the town has, you would follow them?
Yep.
They need a, right? They need a spile, uh, style permit?
Yes.
Yeah, so. Is, is that area already cleared?
For the most part, it's already cleared. We will remove seven additional trees just to get some space around this, and just because of the soil, uh, moving that we're doing, we're going to replace all of them.
Okay.
Replace all the trees?
All of the trees that are being removed, right.
Is that on the plan?
Yes, we submitted a separate plan and the, uh, tree removal permit as well.
Okay, I don't think, all right, so you, you submitted the tree replacement plan?
Yes.
You're a seven trees.
One for one, yes.
Mont, did you have any questions on the engineer's letter?
Yeah, it did just have a few things, um, there was one question on the soil infiltration testing, I thought single-family properties were exempt, so I just wanted to clarify that.
I'll, you'll coordinate that with the, uh, township engineer for the plot plan and review tech.
Okay. Okay. Um, no problem, and then there was a few questions in here that were related to the garage, I just wanna stress that we're not, um, the garage is really not part of this application, we just wanna show that that's what we were planning for, right? Um, so that's why it's indicated there. Um, that's really all I felt the need to address, the rest of the items we will provide to you.
Hey, you can respond, then.
I have a draft with me right now, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Um, so I just probably need to call out the exact variance we're requesting for the critical slope disturbance, did you get that on record? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so as I said, the entire site is, uh, considered steep slopes. We are disturbing critical slopes, uh, type three, so that's over twenty-five percent. The permitted R1 allowance for these slopes over twenty-five percent is fifteen percent. We are proposing, uh, forty-three percent. Uh, that, uh, is being made up with fill mostly, so the trucks are gonna be coming to the site, um, not removing the material from the site, and, uh, that's just to add on to that previously disturbed area, right, to level out there.
How many trucks?
Uh, I would assume about thirty trucks.
Over how long a period of time?
Um, so it'll be split, the, the fill material will come in first, and then there's gonna be construction material, I was including it in that number. Um, Austin, do you have a projection for how quickly you wanna get this done once it starts?
No, we're completing our contracts right now.
Yeah.
So you'd have to.
I'd say fairly, fairly quick.
Yeah, you have to comply at all the tons of requirements on that anyway.
Yeah, we, yeah, there's no, uh, request to get outside, the requirements.
And sufficient landscaping will be done once the project is done?
Yeah, the, the, on the far side of the walls that would be disrupted is heavily wooded from to begin with, so.
Okay.
You can't really, I, I can't see my neighbor there.
Okay.
And he can't see me for two-thirds of the year until it would be.
Okay.
He's still blocked by all the trees.
How, how high is the wall you're building?
So it's a tiered wall system, so there's, uh, these two walls, they are five point three feet each.
At the highest point?
At the highest point, correct. On average, they're below four feet, but at the highest point, it's five point three.
And those walls are going in because, are they already there?
They're not there. They're going in, yeah, they're going in to provide that level area, um, off of the driveway.
Okay, got it.
Any last, uh, problems?
Any other questions by the board?
No.
Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on testimony given this evening? I hear none and seen none. Um, testimony's done?
Testimony's done.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? I hear none and seen none. Uh, I think it's a reasonable application.
Putting stone is a very. Non-negotiable.
Very undelaying area, that's the word to use.
Steep slope area.
Should've been, should've been here last week.
I know, I, we probably need to change the application to block the lot.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Ready, you agree and you're gonna do a resolution?
Yes.
Thank you.
Application twenty-three, colon thirty-nine, Oskin Murphy. Twenty-five putting stone, floor, block nine, lot number four, zone R dash one, to issue or grant a severance to, for a slip, steep slope disturbance contrary to engineer's report, engineer's section, as well as, uh, tree plantation, et cetera, whatever has been discussed in this meeting.
And does that include the, um, recommendation to the council that will approve the?
Approve the style, style moving permit, yes.
And you'll conform with whatever the, the engineer report, you say you'll conform with all that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand. Hurricane.
Yes, the, uh, result is the resolution is granted.
Thank you.
Enjoy, we'll remo, we'll memorialize this at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You won't be able to buy a few new carpets in a while.
What kind of cars do you have, anything interesting?
Well, they're more modern cars, BMW, I mean, three, RS five.
I have a, uh, I have a two thousand and ten Lexus IS two fifty C.
The next, the next.
Love it.
Two JG motors.
Okay. Uh, okay, we're gonna call, uh, application twenty-three forty Patel, eighty-eight Hamburg Road, Seavarrington sole, six-foot high fence.
You already heard, you already heard the other one, right?
Have a seat.
How does four and one sound?
Swear on.
My name is Neil Patel.
I have to swear, you have to swear in. Raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board, it's true as hell you got. And you're, okay, you're, how do you spell your name, sir?
I, you, you.
Thank you, you're sworn, you can, you can drop your.
Okay, so, um, I know your file was here somewhere.
Why do you need a six-foot high fence?
So I have kids, uh, one, two-year-old, and one, and my daughter is six-year-old, she's twenty-seven, so, um, my little one, he just, we have corner lot, so he just run away, like, when we're outside, it's hard to handle him. Secondly, we, uh, we were sitting outside in summertime, random people, they just walk in our property and just try to talk to my kids, I mean, they try to play, but now there's a lot of incidents happen, so, and my kids are very friendly, they just, like, it's.
So you, so you heard the other testimony, a four-foot with lattice.
Five-foot high fence, one foot of lattice, four foot solid.
Fill your fence with.
Your kids are only six and one?
Yeah, but my daughter, like, I, like, from that fence, but like you said, the, we need the wrap, um, the one foot, you, visible, right?
It's not all.
Lattice.
People can see at least, right?
You, you can, you can see through the, the last foot, but you have to be standing and looking right through the, you know.
Like, like.
You have to be looking through the little. Four-foot high solid, solid fence, four-foot high, she's not even four-foot high, is she?
No, she do.
Okay, and then, and when you, and you know what? When she, when she is four-foot high, she'll know better. And, and then the, the top one is, uh, it could be, it could be straight up and down, or it could be lattice, and you're gonna do a nice little planting on the outside so it looks nice. We, we're, we're not trying to build stockades here, you know, we're, we're not trying to build prisons.
My question is, like, in my, in my area, there's a lot of.
Let me explain something.
Sure.
The portion of the fence that extends out from the corner of your house to Camden, Camden Road, and then along Camden Road, and then back about twenty-five feet, that's the variance. If you eliminated that and simply brought a fence off the back corner of the house and made your backyard a little smaller, you don't need a variance, and you could have your six-foot high fence.
But you're gonna cut down your backyard.
But you, you'd lose your area, so the.
We want to use the.
The portion that Mr. Hurricane is talking to you about is just that piece, not all of it. You could have six feet in the back and backside.
On the sides, yeah.
That's fine.
If you set, if you set your, your fence back a little bit, and you went out and bought six-foot Norway spruces, and planted them on the outside of the fence, you would get your six feet, and we would never see your fence, which is five-foot high with a, a one foot. A natural, a natural fence.
So the amount of the fencing that's on the street side cannot exceed?
Five foot.
It'd be five foot, four-foot high, the rest can be six-foot solid.
The backside is, can be six foot.
Yeah, like my neighbor has corner float, and they have six-foot solid.
The zoning officer's here, she's probably taking notes, and she'll be out there tomorrow.
We don't complain, man.
Well, you just told us, you just told us about it, and the zoning officer's here, she just wrote down the address.
We don't have any.
My Jennifer needs something else to do, right?
Okay, we are, we are trying to provide for you security, but we also don't want six-foot high fences along roads, they're just not attractive. Six-foot solid fences are not attractive. And like I said, if you put vegetation on the outside, get yourself some nice six-foot high Norway spruces, they grow a foot a year, they expand, and, and I, and I can show you a house on Lake Shore Drive in Lake Hiawatha, it was, it was, uh, very, very close to the property line, and we insisted that they put, um, in that case, they put the fence up, and inside the fence they put, um, arborvidi, so the deer can't get to them. You can't see, you can't see anything, and that was maybe ten or so years, maybe even more than that. But it, it's a natural barrier. If, if you want a fence and no, no significant landscaping, best we're gonna do is five-foot.
Yeah, I'm just worried about, like, you know, like, like now there is a crime, it's just going high and high, like, doesn't matter where you live, so just worry about future, because my daughter, she's very beautiful, I don't want, like, someone taking a picture from that.
Ma'am, I, I, I will tell you that if someone is, has the, the mind to do some crime, they're gonna do it, and.
Well, they have a ten-foot fence.
A six-foot fence is not gonna stop them.
Unless you have a razor wire and a milk full of alligators.
Or a hundred and fifty-foot, foot rotting.
That's really hard variance to get, so don't do that.
Well, it's, the hard thing is keeping the alligators alive in the winter time.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Look at the barriers. Okay, I, I think we're being very fair, I, I. Let's move on. Are you willing to accept that?
No choice.
And you can make the decision about vegetation. I'm asking you to put some nice planting on the outside, something the deer are not going to eat. Very great, but if you, if you want to go to the next step and put something that's going to create a nat, natural barrier, all, all the better.
That is advisable, yeah.
So you're willing to amend your application, five-foot high, one foot of the five-foot's gonna be lattice, or basketwood?
Four.
Four plus one.
Four plus.
And any other questions by the board?
No.
Five.
No.
Six.
Four foot plus one. But any.
Well, you're doing. You do realize, we are not asking you to do that for the whole thing.
No, no, no.
Just a.
Just the, uh.
Just along the road.
Along the road, the rest can be six foot.
Rest can be six foot.
Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given? Uh, here none and seen none, there's nothing else you'd like to add, right? Are there members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? I hear none and seen none.
This is a reasonable request.
Good, good application now?
Good application.
Okay, and you're gonna frame a resolution?
Sure.
You're my go-to man tonight, Mr. Ready.
Yeah. Application twenty-three, colon forty, Snehal Patel, eighty-eight Hamburg Road, block two seventy-two, lot number one, zone R dash four, to issue, grant a severance to install five foot, total five foot, four foot solid and one foot lattice, solid fence contrary to section four thirty dash eleven A and B.
That's all.
Yeah.
That's all.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, Nora, call the roll?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yep.
Hurricane.
Yes, results of variance is granted, enjoy, we'll memorialize this in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Motion to adjourn the seven o'clock meeting at quarter to nine.
Some move.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Let's go, yeah.
Anyone opposed? It's very interesting, it took us an hour and fifteen minutes to do one case, and three cases in forty, in thirty minutes.
Yeah.
That's my life. Okay, uh, you ready to start the next meeting? Nora, you need a minute, you'll tell me when you're free.
Sure.
Make it quick, make it quick.
Oh, we gotta get potty stopped.
No, I just kinda stress. These chairs are wonderful.
My car, my, uh, penis just don't sit too long. Here we go, for the seven-thirty meeting at quarter to nine, here we go. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA ten colon four dash six, that's second, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Still here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Yep.
Mr. Parek.
Yeah.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Mr. Willand.
Yep.
Chairman Irakane.
Present.
We have Board Planner, Mr. Chadwick, Board Engineer, Mr. Holloway, uh, Board Attorney, Mr. Kent.
We will, uh, dispense with the pledge of allegiance, could you do that at seven o'clock meeting? And at this point, if any member of the public who has any business to brought to this board that's not on this evening's agenda, I hear none and seen none. Uh, we have correspondence from Mr. O'Neal. Do I have a motion to carry case thirty, twenty-three, twelve, that's the signed case to October eighteenth, without further notice, with whatever extensions are required?
Is there room on the conference?
Hmm?
We have room on the conference?
I don't know, just, I just show up on Wednesday nights.
Well, is Nora okay?
How, how could we have room on?
He asked for it, he seems to think he'll get through both, we all know he won't.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion to that effect?
Some move.
Sure.
Any second? All in favor?[1522.24] Resolutions, uh, twenty-three colon oh eight Duncan, four thirty North Bevillack Road. Site plan with D variance for Dunkin Donuts and convenience with drive-through. Convenience store with drive-through.
Who says we don't grant drive-throughs for Dunkin Donuts?
Well, these are standalone, um, on lots that are not minimal lots.
Well, they're existing drive-throughs.
Existing, and they're existing.
Yes, we did.
I was just thinking about the other case.
Do I have someone who may move, move application twenty-three oh eight?
Some moves.
Second. Any discussion, Nora Calderon?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Pareek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Application twenty-three oh nine Dunkin Donut, or Duncan, uh, one ninety-nine dash two thirty-nine Littleton Road, do I have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Nora, please call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Pareek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. And, let's see.
I don't know what this is.
That's Tucherelli.
The next application, which German is out, can application twenty-three forty-one, Alice Bigfong Lung, L E U N G.
Please come forward.
Two four nine Camden Road, block two one two, lot five, Z R four. Could you please raise your right hand, you swear from testimony you're about to give before the boards, the truth to help you God? And for the record, can you state and spell your name? And how do you spell your name, sir?
Alice Bigfong Lung.
Okay, and you're?
I'm Alice.
So, um, you're here to legalize some, uh, existing conditions. Um, one is yards and courts, shed is in the side yard, two point oh eight existing, six is allowed, and the driveway expansion, zero setback where five is allowed. And the shed, you've got a big piece of property in the back, why'd you put it so close to the property lines? Yeah. Did you put that there or was there when you bought the house?
How many years ago? Twenty years.
Twenty years it's been there. And how did you end up here?
In New Jersey.
How did you, who, how did you come here to, to request variances tonight?
Okay, because, um, we put in an extension, kind of, we thought it's a patio extension to the front, to the left of our driveway.
Mm-hmm.
For the whole purpose is we want to have an extra space for one car in case in the, in the winter time, a lot of time with the snow removal, we just want to park up there. And then, we didn't know we need to get a permit for that, and then.
Do you have a problem parking on the street, uh, normally? Is it, is it easy to park on the street or is it dangerous to park on the street?
Um. In the winter time, we, with the snow removal, we have to move it out.
Okay. And have you discussed it with all of your neighbors, your neighbor have making comments, your neighbor to the left, they, they have no problems with this? And, um, how, uh?
So you have, you have a driveway there and you added this thing for another car, so we have more family, have two or three cars, that's why you needed it? So that's why you needed that extra space. And so you just put it in there, you didn't know you needed a permit?
No.
Right along the property line. If your neighbor complained? Who complained, why are you here?
I don't know, one day the zoning officer come and said, uh, good neighbor, just report us. So he come out and look at the things.
So somebody did a report?
I, I think, he said somebody reported, he come out and check and then, and then one thing lead to another, we didn't know we need a permit for the shed in, back in two thousand. And then we just leave rocks in the back to add a tiny little patio space extension.
When did, when did you put in this driveway extension?
This driveway extension is back in, I believe in July or August.
So it's been recent?
That's new, yeah, but the rest of them is old.
Okay, the shed's been there for twenty years.
The shed, yeah, two thousand.
Why did they call out the five and a half foot tall fence? That complies.
But they're not for variance here for that.
No, that's.
There's not more of a variance.
I mean, just legalize.
Only side yard and.
Legalize the fence?
The fence, we did not get a permit because I only put the fence in between my neighbor and my property on one side.
That's not on the agenda.
It doesn't.
Half feet high fence.
Alright, so you never got a permit for the fence, it's not a variance, and you'll do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any, um?
So we're kind of sorry about that, we didn't know, and now we're backtracking everything to make it right.
You know, the, the conditions in Lake Porzepine with street parking and everything is not always the best.
Yes.
Um, and, um, it's, I, my personal opinion is it's, it's a de minimis request, that little bit of setback. Unless your neighbor has a problem with it, you say your neighbor has no problem. Your neighbor's not here tonight, is he? No, okay. Any other questions by the board? No. Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none, there's nothing else you'd like to add, is there? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? I hear none and see none.
And just for the record, the engineer did have a letter where he had no issue with.
Thank you. What do you think, Mr. Woolen?
Yeah. It's a reasonable minimum.
It's not a perfect application, I know that.
Nobody's complaining, I'm like, I complain.
So you say it's a good application?
Yep, let's go.
Someone frame a resolution?
Dave, you have an alpha flag tonight.
Alright, I got it. Application number twenty-three forty-one, Alice Bigfong Lung, two forty-nine Camden Road, block two twelve, lot five in the R four, the R four zone. I recommend that the board grant the C variance to legalize the driveway expansion, patio shed, and, are we doing the fence? Why not? The five point five foot high fence contrary to section four thirty dash N C and section four thirty dash two seven five X.
Second. Second case. Any discussion, Nora Calderon?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Pareek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Results of variance is granted, your work is done already, so it'll just be memorialized and you'll get your paperwork in the mail.
You need to go get your fence permit, that's all you need.
Thank you.
Okay. And we go into case twenty-three oh five, Endor Mansour. This continuation of the case from June twenty-first. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman. We can proceed. Good evening, Chairman. Uh, we were here last time, uh, to what extent do you want us to go into a recitation of, uh, what occurred last time before I introduce our expert witness for tonight?
I think the last time you were here, there were some issues with obtaining an expert witness and maybe possibly removing, um, some kitchens and doing some other modifications and, you know, and addressing all the zoning officers', um, issues.
That's correct, I'll give a brief recap, uh, last time we were here on an appeal, uh, there were five issues, uh, that the zoning officer brought up. Uh, we chose to only address one of those issues, we're dropping the appeal on four of them. The only issue we're here to appeal are the issues relating to a bathroom in an attic. Uh, all the other issues are being waived as far as the appeal goes.
So you removed all the, um, subject to the zoning officer's, um, decision, you removed four out of the five, um?
As far as I know, uh, to the extent they haven't been removed, if they have, uh, my client has no objection to removing them, uh, in the future, and we.
You're still gonna apply for a variance, correct?
I'm sorry?
You're eliminating the, the issue of an interpretation, but you're not eliminating as to whether you need variance on it?
We're here to appeal whether we need a variance, we're here to appeal the decision of the zoning officer.
Four of the five, you know you need a variance.
Correct.
But you, are you gonna ask for a variance or not?
On the other, on the other floor.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, my client informs me, as far as the door goes, uh, we believe it's a safety issue, uh, so on that, we would either ask for appeal or we'd ask for a variance, uh, but purposes of tonight's appeal, we're focusing on whether a bathroom is permitted, uh, in the attic that currently exists.
So then, again, you're amending the application, you're not appealing, you're not asking for any variances on four of the issues that the zoning officer identified. Tonight, you're just asking, you're just here to give testimony with regard to one issue, and that is the third floor, the bathroom on the third floor?
Correct, we're here to appeal whether that indeed is a zoning violation, uh, we have an expert to give testimony tonight, uh, to state that it is not in fact a zoning violation.
Okay, so and you.
What about all the other variances you requested before, what are, what are you doing with those?
I believe they're withdrawn.
You're withdrawing them?
No, they don't.
They can't withdraw.
Because that's all.
That's what I'm saying, Mr. King, they're not withdrawing.
You, did you never advertise?
They have to comply with.
C variance or D variance.
Get on the record.
Or anything on this application, right? You advertise only for interpretation.
Only for, only for an appeal, only for an interpretation.
So how can they ask for variances tonight then?
Again.
They're just here for appeal.
I just wanna make sure everybody understands.
Correct.
The case hasn't gone away because they said they're dropping four items. Those are to be dealt with in the future.
Correct, we preserve our rights with those.
Well, you're, you're gonna, you preserve your rights, you're gonna have to
Come back for.
Do something pretty quick, or you're gonna keep getting zoning something, spend the rest of your life in the courtroom. I mean, you can't just push this down the road, this is not that kind of a case.
Correct, we, I'd be like to get it done as quickly as possible, to my client's disadvantage, uh, that the matter is, has.
After they present their. What about this part here with the covered, says, had permit for covered deck illegally converted into an addition? Is that part of the stuff that you're, you're not going to appeal for, you're not, you're, you're not asking for an appeal on that?
As far as the, as far as I know, as far as the zoning board, or as far as the zoning officer was concerned, the issue was that it was split up into three different, into three different parts. My client has.
Okay, okay, well, we can hear, we can hear from the zoning officer at some point tonight, she's, she's present. So you wanna have your witness sworn in and, and we can proceed with the testimony?
I'd like to, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, raise your right hand. You swear from testimony you're about to give before the board, it's the truth to help you God? And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Steven Considine, C O N S I D I N E, sixty-three Prospect Street, Burnsville, New Jersey. And in reference to my, uh, expert.
What are you gonna testify, engineer, planner?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, thirty-five years. I think Mr. Chadwick, I know very well.
Pull the microphone closer.
Close to the microphone.
All your licenses are in full force and effect, sir?
Yes.
And have you provided testimony and been qualified in other courts in the state of New Jersey?
Absolutely.
What is his last name?
Uh, Con- Constan- Constan-
Considine.
Constan-
C O N S I D I N E.
Okay, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Considine, uh, can you discuss to the.
I'll give a brief summary of the project, I'm the architect director for Mr. Mansour's renovation. It was an existing house he had an addition to. I believe that, um, the zoning officer's interpretation of the attic as a service floor is incorrect. I can go by what I designed the house as an addition. I specifically read through the ordinance, it said a half a story, and I could read through your definition of what a half a story is, that it's a partial story under a gable roof, the wall plates on which at least two opposite exterior walls are not more than four feet above the floor, such story. So I designed the roof to sit, the roof rafter to sit on the front wall and to sit on the stub wall thirty inches in the rear. Therefore, it would not qualify, it would qualify as a half a story under your town ordinance.
Would you have built, would you have designed it, would you have made the plans the way you did, uh, but for the way the ordinance was drafted and but for your interpretation of what existing law is?
I designed the building in superfluous with your town ordinance. So it is not, and so you're only allowed two and a half stories in this zone. It was, it's designed to be a two and a half story building. There's no way it's a third story. It is, however, a habitable attic. A habitable attic is allowed under state code, which by definition is one-third of the flooring area below at a six, seven foot ceiling height is considered a habitable attic. This particular building, I designed the attic, uh, the ceiling to be six feet eight inches. So whatever floor area below it would not even qualify as floor area. Thirdly, you're allowed under state law, a bathroom in a habitable attic.
Did you design a, uh, bathroom in this, in this attic?
I did. Based on state law, specifically in reviewing your town's ordinance, there's no provision that prohibits habitable attic. It is allowed in all of New Jersey, it would have to be allowed in your town as well.
Did you design the attic, uh, with a, with a pitch roof for a gable?
With the gable roof.
Uh, you mentioned, uh, six feet, the measurement. Is it six feet if you measure it on the sides of the?
From the floor to the ceiling height, I designed it to be six feet eight. The exterior wall, which is only one, I designed it to be thirty inches.
So in other words, to clarify, uh?
So by definition, it's a half a story.
Well, I think, just to reiterate, on the sides, uh, it's less than six feet or less than four feet?
Less than four feet, thirty inches. And on the other side, it's not even a stub wall, the rafters sit on the wall below.
What is the height of that rafter? What is the height on the other side?
Thirty inches.
Uh, and when you were putting your plans together and basing those plans as you testified, uh, on the ordinance and the law, how did you read it, uh, as far as what the allowable height was?
You're allowed two and a half stories of thirty-five feet, the house complies with every provision of the zoning ordinance. So I'm gonna reiterate it for one last time. It is not a three-story house, it's a two and a half story house.
Does the house exceed thirty-five feet?
No, it does not. It's not designed to exceed thirty-five.
How tall was it designed to be, based on your?
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know. It's less than thirty-five feet.
Include that the tallest peak is less than thirty-five feet of those three.
I have no further questions, uh, turn it over to the board to ask any questions they may have.
Any questions by the board on this?
Can you, can you repeat again, this is two and a half story, and what makes it habitable in attic?
A habitable attic is any space in the attic that at seven feet of ceiling height can be no more than one-third of the floor area below. So even if the ceiling height is eight feet, you start measuring the floor area at seven feet, and then based on the floor area below, can't exceed one-third of that floor area. But it could be twenty feet, doesn't matter, as long as that seven foot line is not, you know, that's where we start calculating floor area.
So it doesn't make it three-story, even though you have a bathroom in the attic?
Not a three-story building.
What is that?
But habitable attics are not considered under state law, a story, half a story.
Is it, is it habitable, the entire width and the entire depth of that floor can be habitable?
If, if the floor area at seven feet could be the whole length of the building, if, if it's not greater than one-third of the floor area below, it could be the whole length of the house.
So, so, but you're, but if it's one, if it's.
That does not include bathrooms or closets.
Okay, so the floor, let's say the floor below is a thousand square feet.
You're allowed third, three hundred.
So it can't be a hundred percent of the, in that case? It can only be three hundred and thirty-three square feet?
At seven feet.
And that's what you have, seven foot, six foot eight?
Six foot eight, so.
That's not seven feet.
Do we have that plan?
No, literally, because it's.
Alright, we, we submitted that, uh, last.
Because it's less than six, less than seven feet, it doesn't count, none of the floor area at all counts. So it could be the whole building.
It can't be the whole building, you say it only could be one-third.
At seven feet. Do you understand what I'm saying? The ceiling height has to be seven feet in order for it to be, start counting as habitable floor area.
What is the ceiling height?
But he's limited to three, he's limited to a third of that floor.
At seven feet.
It's no greater than seven.
How many, I feel like it's who's on first here. How many square feet, let's say it's a thousand square feet and it's got a seven foot ceiling, how many square feet can he occupy in that floor?
One-third.
One-third, three hundred and thirty-three. Okay, so that's the limit, one.
That's the limit.
In this particular case, it's one-third of the floor.
Okay, that's the limit.
Factually, you have to understand, most of these have slanted ceilings, and it's space to use less than seven feet high, but the, the control is, you said that you gave us that exhibit last week, the last meeting? Showing that one-third, uh, control point?
In the plan line.
I've never seen a plan that shows the seven foot limit in the attic and as it relates to the floor.
Sounds like no information to me.
Do you know if that was submitted?
I'm not sure.
We've gone that route before.
Last meeting, I submitted what, what we have submitted, uh, to the board. To what extent, it has measurements in there, uh, to what was submitted, we submitted the full plan, uh, at the last meeting.
There's some stuff there. But that's seven foot, what we're talking about, what you're, what you're, what you're putting in testimony now was not submitted, articulated in that plan.
Is this, is it this packet here, where it says?
Correct, that's correct.
New addition?
Yes, that's, that's it.
Let me take a second.
It doesn't show the attic plan.
Like I said, that sounds like new information to me, I, I did not hear that. Then again, we did not have the architect testifying for this meeting. Is this the eye?
Do you have that package, Mr. Considine?
Yeah.
Considine.
When we built this, we added the bathroom way up.
That's in there.
Huh?
It's in there. That's more than what. I'm looking at a diagram, A eight. A eight shows the side view, and it shows the attic area with a six foot eight ceiling.
What is the page number?
A eight.
Eight five point one, Mr..
Eight five point one. Well, guess what? I don't have an eight five point one. Do, 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 I got an E, I, I don't have an eight five point one. A one point one, oh, there it is, okay, this is the attic, attic, okay, attic. And this is the whole, this is the only part of the area that's being developed. No?
No.
You said the bathroom doesn't count in the one-third limit. And closets. But. You can't tell, oh, I'm sorry.
Is it, is it, this is the only part that's going to be occupied on this corner here?
No, the whole attic is occupied, it's a habitable attic. So based on the floor area below, you're allowed one-third at seven feet. So the attic could be eight feet, nine feet, doesn't matter.
But it's not even eight feet.
But we don't, when you hit the point of seven feet, it's when you start calculating.
There's no numbers here, though. So what, so what's the floor area allowed at six-foot-eight inches?
The full floor is what you're saying, because you're six, you're at six-eight. You're at six-foot-eight, correct?
Well, I designed it to be six-fourteen.
It's the top.
Yeah.
It's the top part.
But that's what the law states the side of the house. So that shows. You, you test? Not complying with that, that has to be a justice to comply with the, the law.
And you're talking about the, uh, the building code, correct?
Yeah.
By the state.
But no provision in your zoning ordinance that prohibits habitable attic, therefore, I have to assume, if it's not strictly prohibited, and it's allowed under state law, it would have to be allowed in this town.
But, uh?
Allowed in every other?
You can't make that assumption.
Yeah.
That's the assumption you made, but that, you can't make that assumption.
There has to be a reason why the zoning officer filed it, and I'm sure she'll testify to that.
I have to tell you my, my point of view.
And you keep saying you designed it for certain things, but you haven't testified that it was built to that design space.
Last, last meeting, if I could refresh your memory, my, my client who's sitting behind me built it, uh, testified that he built it according to the plans. The issue last time is that we did not have Mr. Consonine here, Mr. Consonine is here to fill in the gap, that he did indeed design it, uh, so, so, to work in conjunction with my client's testimony, that he built it, this is as far as the attic goes, according to these plans.
No, you're right.
Can I, can I ask a dimensions question? Rudimentary, uh, assessment of it, looks like the house is sixty feet wide, and, I'm sorry, sixty feet long, and the attic looks like it's twenty-seven-point-one-oh, uh, inhabitable. So that makes it sixty times twenty-seven, two buck three-eighty.
Almost fourteen-hundred.
Hold on, I can do this. I can do this. Sixty, clear, sixty point times twenty-seven point equals sixteen-hundred-and-twenty square feet. Rough number, rough, rough number. And you're telling me that a third of it can be occupied?
At seven feet, if the ceiling is at seven feet, that's when you start calculating.
So I'm looking at these lines, I'm looking at these lines here, and, and it's not the entire width of the, of the house. The, the, I'm, I'm assuming that this is the seven-foot part. Look, let's just say, the maximum, the maximum it can be is sixteen-hundred-and-twenty feet, if in fact at seven feet, okay?
No.
No, that's the maximum this area can be.
Yeah, totally.
So if I divide that by three?
I'm going to draw this for you, because I know it could be a little confusing.
He's only can do five-hundred-and-forty square feet up there.
I'm going to draw this for you, because I know it could be a little confusing.
Yeah, so if it's less than seven feet? No, no part of the attic exceeds, exceeds seven feet pursuant to Mr. Consonine's testimony.
So what does that mean?
Is it okay? This is typical.
If I interrupt, he's quoting construction law, he's not quoting zoning law. Zoning doesn't fall under the state, zoning falls under municipal. This is construction.
This is the area that you start calculating, X.
So how many square feet can he occupy on the third floor? I mean, on the, on the attic floor?
One-third of the floor area below at seven feet.
What's that, what's that number?
Well, his house was designed to be six-foot-eight, so it should be the, could be the whole floor.
Whole floor, you mean? Because nothing is above seven-foot.
Seven feet, that's the law, I didn't make the law.
No, but, but, but in your? You said it was one-third at seven feet.
Right, but if the ceiling is less than seven feet, then you don't start counting that as floor area.
No, you, you, in your testimony, you, you presented that you, architect, you made a plan as per the state as well as the local town zoning rules, right?
Right. Two and a half stories or thirty-five?
So zoning laws, uh, does comply with your plan?
My plan complies with all your zoning laws.
Well, the construction code.
No, zoning laws and the construction code.
So to not be considered a third story?
No, no, zoning, zoning office.
We need to slow down a second, and we, we've dealt, I've dealt with this expert in different form, and he knows, he's an architect, and he, and he's, can give opinion and opine on the building code. He's not a licensed planner, he can't take and give you testimony on whether the zoning and the building code merge or what, drops the other. Uh, I think he wanted to hear from the zoning officer on that last meeting.
Can he, can he testify to the fact that he relied, even if he's an expert on it, that he relied?
Of course not. I didn't know.
On the building, he, he can rely, he, he's an architect, he looked at the construction code, he, he designed off of that.
Well, every architect has to comply with zoning ordinance, so you don't, when you're designing a, a house, you're not going to get a planner in to do the zoning analysis, right? You know that. You're going to have the architect do the zoning analysis.
So do you have any more testimony, or, do you have any more testimony?
No. Unless you have any other questions.
Are any members of the public have any questions, this witness on testimony given? Any members of the public? Jennifer, you have any questions?
Not a question.
You, you're going to want to testify?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any other witnesses?
My client would like to provide brief, brief testimony.
He's not going to repeat everything said last time, is he? Because I think he repeated it about nine times.
No, Mr. Chairman.
If I remember correctly, and you know what, my short-term memory is not that.
Actually, it was twelve times.
Twelve times.
Um, Mr. Manzer, you're, you've, you've been sworn prior, so you're still under that oath, you understand that?
Yes.
Everything you're going to say here is the truth?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
No, you need to?
You guys should just hang, hang tight for a second. Mr. Manzer, can you, um, add some additional testimony to those relevant?
I'm not a professional in a builder, I'm, I'm an architect. I hired an architect, made additions to my house. So I got the plans from the architect, I want to draw this house according to my needs. I want to know something like what I need. So I hired an architect, he drew the plans out, and I submitted to the town. And then town comes back to me, one lady says, everything's approved, go ahead and build it. So everything that was built was approved, approved by the town.
You are going to repeat everything you said the last time, aren't you?
Did you, did you build this house in accordance with the plans, the architectural plans that Mr. Consonine drew up?
Yes, except, except for the, uh, for the porch. There was an opening in the porch, uh, there was an opening there, but I asked, I asked the building inspector Frank, I said, can I just close this opening? He said, sure, you can do whatever you want. I started, he said, is that?
In all due respect, it's hearsay. You don't have any, you have, you have him here tonight to testify? And, and let's drop that as a show, okay?
So that's the only thing that is different from this plan is there's, on the porch, there was an opening there, which, uh, when we framed it, it was too tall, that's what I think. Other than that, everything is in the plan, it's the same. That's all I can.
If anything else to add, Mr. Manzer?
Okay, what I want to say, everything, again, was inspected by the town, by the building, plumbing, electrical, fire, each went through, everything, everything passed. If there was any kind of problem with the attic or anything else, they could bore it up to me at that time, say, hey, this is not, because I have these at the site all the time, they come in, they check it, they inspect it, they're going to make sure this, whatever's in the plan is built. So when they come in, they check the plans, the building, the plumber, they check it, make sure whatever's in the plan is being built. So after that, they're just giving the stick, everything's fine, go for the next step, next step, so it's past the roofing, it's past the electric, everything passed. The house is completed, I want to get my CO, all of a sudden, they say to me, why did you build the bathroom in the attic? I said, it's in the plan, it's built, approved. Plumbing was there, electric was there, fire was there, building was there, they checked everything over. If there was a problem, they should have said that when I was framing it. Why they say that after everything's finished, shit runs around, anything, everything, if there was an issue, they should just said it at that time. About the bathroom, they should have said at that time, why didn't they finish it? That's, that's all I can, I can't, I don't understand it. If there was an issue, I would have rebuilt it, I said, how could I?
Do you have any additional testimony to add to the case? You've already told us this at least seventeen times now.
My question is?
Twenty-three?
I have a question.
Twenty-three times.
Is it a full bath or a half bath?
Full bath. What was in the plans?
Is it a shower or a tub?
Is it towel, tub, and a shower? What was in the plan?
I don't have the plans.
But you, but your, your testimony was that you wanted to be up there to watch TV. And so if you were going to be up there to watch TV, why'd you need a full bathroom? You need a potty and a sink.
I'm seven, I go to the bathroom five times a day.
Sure, so you have a toilet and a sink, you don't need a full bathroom up there.
Yeah, that's my taste. I want to have a bathroom.
You're telling me, your testimony at the last meeting was that you wanted to watch TV up there?
Yes.
And I said, my comment to you, you're as old as I am, and the last thing I'd want to do is climb three flights of stairs to watch TV, okay? I would want it in, in the basement or on the ground floor. Now, if you, if, the only thing you're going to use it for up there is to watch TV, all you need is a toilet and sink, a half bath.
Is there more?
Okay, all right, now, don't even, don't even answer, because you're going to give me the same answer.
I knew there was a law, having the bathroom there, you could sit in all of that. So when I first, you could have said, no, you don't have to have it, so I wouldn't build it.
When did this bathroom come into the plan documents? Was it there originally or not?
No, not originally, what happened was?
And so the zoning officer saw this, and would have classified it as an attic. And addicts, addicts aren't inhabitable.
So what happened was, when the house had been framed, I saw the huge space on top. So when they were doing the inspection for the building, gentleman's name was Frank, I said to him, you know, can I use this now to put a bathroom in? They could use it, why waste the space? It's a big space. He said, well, you got to get approval, have your architect draw it up, submit to the town, if it passes, we could build it. Now, if we can't build it?
Right. Okay, so I, I? Okay, okay. We got it. So you're, I just want to say, you feel you had the plans drawn, took them to the town, got them approved, and built it to the plan, and then when you get to CO, they say you can't have that, is that right?
Exactly.
Okay, got it, all right, thank you. Now, can we hear some other testimony? We've, I think we got your story, re- re- okay?
I have, I have no further questions of my, of my.
Any member of the public, any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none, I see none. You have any other witnesses?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we're, we're at this point, we're going to give the zoning officer an opportunity to present her case, okay?
To testify. She's going to testify?
Yeah, she's going to testify. And then we'll ask if there's any additional, uh, members of the public who wish to testify.
Ma'am, could you raise your right hand? You swear firm testimony about to give before the board its true self, you got? And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Jennifer Smith, S-M-I-T-H.
And Ms. Smith, are you?
Director and zoning officer.
And how long have you been the zoning officer for, um, for participating?
I've been with the town thirty-two years, and I've probably been zoning officer twenty-five.
And you have any qualifications or certifications?
Yes, I do, I'm a rockers, zoning officer.
Thank you, you're sworn and qualified.
Thank you.
Is she going to testify?
Are you going to testify?
Haley is the assistant zoning officer, and she has the construction file with us that will be able to answer some of your questions about construction.
Do you want to swear her in, just to be safe?
Could you raise your, your right hand, ma'am? You swore firm testimony, you're about to provide to the board its true self, you got?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
My name is Haley Donnelly, H-A-I-L-E-Y-D-O-N-N-E-L-L-Y.
And your position with the town is?
Assistant zoning officer.
And have you gone through any certifications or trainings to be assistant zoning officer?
I, yes, I have the zoning official certification.
And how long have you been in that position?
I've been the assistant zoning officer for about two years, but I received a certification six years ago.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Chairman, she's sworn and qualified.
Okay. Take it all in.
First, I'd like to say that, to, to help understand this application, it started in zoning in 2013 as an addition. That permit was issued by another assistant zoning officer, it was for a single-family dwelling with one kitchen and two wet bars. There was nothing in the basement and nothing in the attic. If you look through the construction file, you'll see that every year, there was resumils and changes, so much that the inspectors were confused as to what was happening. It changed repeatedly, pages were pulled, pages were changed, sometimes they came back to zoning, sometimes they did not. Over those years, inspectors changed. In January of this year, new inspectors came out and did the inspection, and they looked at the prior approval zoning permits, and they realized that the deck at the rear of the house never had a permit for an addition, which really, all they had to do was come back to zoning and correct that. And they did come back and correct that. During those inspections, we realized that there were many changes made to the plans that were not on the original plans, such as the wet bars turned into full kitchens, cabinets with locations for a stove, a dishwasher, and a refrigerator. And when we met in January with the homeowner and his wife, they explained, and I think his son also came, they explained to us that the husband and wife would like to live in the middle, and he would like one son to live on one side, and his other sons and family to live on the other side, thus creating a three-family.
And who told you that?
Mr. Manzer.
And he's, he was the person who was sworn?
Yes.
Yep, in the blue shirt.
Correct. Um, the, uh, the assistant construction official was there, I think, uh, the code enforcement officer was there, Haley's eye, they, we were all witnesses to that. So they explained the reason why they wanted and why they had revised the plans repeatedly to make changes, which were understandable, but zoning only issued two wet bars. They were never to be anything more than a cabinet and a sink. When my, when Haley and Michael, our code enforcement officer, did the inspection, two of those kitchens became full kitchens with a space for dishwasher, space for refrigerator, and space for stove. Some of those appliances were in other rooms, so in the pictures that we submitted previously, you'll see those appliances in other rooms. So as soon as we realized what happened, we also realized that there were two exterior doors added to the application that were not on the previous zoning. One on each side of the house to help with each family enter, so as to not disturb him and his wife in the center location. He wanted to close off the openings, so in the plans, you'll see five-foot openings throughout the house that are now closed off. So in essence, you can come into the front door, but you can only enter through the center of house, to the basement, to the first floor, to the second floor, to the attic. The two sides can be entered by the side doors and are completely separate and independent from the interior space.
And they were not approved?
And they were not approved. There were changes that happened, like I said, it became confusing because there were so many bubbles and so many changes in the plans. So in January, the, um, the plumbing inspector and my, um, electric inspector found kitchens, and they reported them immediately to zoning, which is why we went out. If you look through the construction file, you'll see that he has failed numerous inspections. He has not passed any of them. Plumbing's notes and electrical's notes require the kitchen and the bathroom in the attic to be removed. So it, they did not get passed. The original application of the original plan from 2013 was approved by construction.
And that, and that did not have three kitchens, correct?
That did not have three.
And that did not have those two, uh, extra entrance ways from the sides?
Correct, they were never approved.
And the attic?
And the attic. So when the, when the plans were finally submitted to us, after we realized what was going on, we looked at the plans, and in the zoning ordinance, under definitions of attic, attic's definition is the open uninhabitable space, which is why I quoted it as a three-story and as a habitable space. Because yes, the construction code has regulations that he's testi- Because yes, the construction code has regulations that he's testifying to.
And when you say he, that's the expert, the architect?
The expert with us, yes. He is quoting construction code, he's not quoting the zoning code. We explained right away that the entire attic has been renovated, and that they would need a variance, and if he applied for that section as a C variance, the board could look at that. But that he would need to apply for a use variance for the three-story, or for the three-family.
A use variance? Oh, for a three...
For the three families.
For a three-story, of course.
So they had separated. And it was our understanding that they were coming back after the last meeting and going to submit new plans, and I gave a very simple list of the things that I wanted. I wanted the two exterior doors on the sides that were installed without permits that gave access to the outside to be removed.
And they were never approved under the original plans that were approved?
In any zoning or construction permit, they have no approvals. I wanted the two kitchens returned to wet bars.
And they were never approved under...
They were never originally approved. And I wanted the interior space on the first floor that had openings of five feet, so that you could flow from one side of the house to the other side of the house, reopen back to the original plan. And I asked...
The approved plan?
The approved plan. And the deck, that zoning gave a permit originally for deck, and then later came back and made an addition, that also has only one door that you can enter, and you can only enter into the center space, so that the spaces are independent of each other. They're basically, I mean, in my years of experience, it's a three-family. And that's why we asked for it to be a use variance.
And also, is there a concern about the bathroom? Because it seems your testimony is that plumbing never approved the plumbing to the attic?
To the attic, there were issues at the time that Haley and Mike Revere did the inspection. The plumbing inspector was there, and the plans that they originally had did not have a bathroom in the attic. So they were doing the inspection, just happened to be at the same time that Haley and Michael were doing the inspection, and he explains that the bathroom was failing the inspection, and he recommended to it to be removed. That has nothing to do with me, as long as they apply for variance, that's, you know, all I want is that the violations be corrected. I'm worried about the future of the home and it being used, maybe not by him as a three-family, but the future as a three-family.
Do we have a set of plans that shows what was built?
The problem with the plans that I currently have, they are, when I look through the tax sheets of the building inspectors, there's a lot of failed inspections. So I'm not sure if, I'm pretty sure that most of the plans need to be corrected to meet that. And they might have been in the process of doing that, but then construction, when we revoked the zoning permit, they couldn't fix those corrections because construction issued stop work orders. So as soon as zoning revokes its permit, construction issues a stop work order, and they were unable to correct. They might have tried to do the right thing and correct, because they could continue to fix. Like plumbing, or electric, or fire comes out and does an inspection and you fail, you would normally submit plans and correct it. And they probably would have done that, but they've been halted because of their zoning violations.
But the only approved plan was from 2013, is your testimony, correct?
Correct. There were minor pages, and what we're finding to be interesting in construction is, instead of keeping the old entire set of plans to show was approved, they were letting the pages swap out. So when you look through a set of the construction, one page is stamped 2020, one page is stamped 2019, one page is stamped 2013, they all have revisions. So we're requiring a brand-new set of plans to show everything, and whatever future changes, if they're returning them to wet bars, or whatever they're doing.
So do you have a copy of the 2013 approved plan?
No, because those pages were changed out.
Shows you swapped out?
But who swapped them out?
I'm assuming that someone in the construction department, one of the offices, thought that they were helping the inspectors by swapping them out. You have, I think in the construction, said one of the old sets that are stamped off, but every time there's an update, and I couldn't even tell you how many updates there are, there are tons, every year. There are minor changes, but then a page changes. So the set of plans the construction gave me, the first page, and the second page, and third page are now 2020. This is going on since 2013, so it keeps changing. So in 2020, one of the pages is 2019. So basically, there are no pages from 2013 that remain, because every single page has changed from those original plans.
Jennifer, do you think the architect would have the original set of plans?
And construction doesn't have a problem with the pages changing to be revised, they just want the zoning prior approval to be met, so that they can continue to do the inspections that they need to do.
But if those changes required a variance, you would not approve them?
Correct.
And do these pages that deviate from 2013 plans have trigger variances?
Yes.
And those variances have never come to this board, to your knowledge, have they?
Any questions about the board?
Yeah, was zoning aware of the attic at all? I mean, the bathroom in the attic?
Not until January of this year.
And what happened once you found out?
As soon as zoning spoke with the plumbing inspector and electrical inspector and found out that there might be possible zoning issues, Michael and Haley went and did an inspection, took pictures, which you had in your original packet?
Yeah.
Some pictures of that inspection, and that's when it revealed the violations. And so he started to write a violation notice, but we tried to meet with homeowners so that they can understand what's going on and how the changes would affect them. So we actually met with Mr. Manser and his wife and his son to try to correct those violations, and I gave them a very, very simple, basic list of things that they could choose to do if they wanted to, to obey the violations, to keep moving. But since then, what are the stop work orders issued on the tax sheets? They, construction immediately issued a stop work order, and they haven't been able to do anything since.
Did zoning ever approve the bathroom, attic with the bathroom?
No.
Or the three kitchens?
Did anyone ever approve?
Plumbing did do an inspection, because you have to remember that the construction inspectors do not know zoning. Their job is to get a set of plans and to go out and inspect them. It's not, especially if there's deviations and changes. As soon as they're made aware that there's a zoning revoke, they completely stop. But their job is to not know zoning, their job is to know electric, plumbing, fire, building, they don't know zoning. So if they arrive and have a set of plans, they're going to inspect that for the swap out of pages. It's usually at the time that everything's looked at by the construction official, they look to see if the zoning needs. And if that's not, if the zoning doesn't need, then they take it back to us. But that didn't happen because of all the failing of inspections, and as soon as the, I think, the change of inspectors came, that's when there were questions. And I think it's the kitchens that really made them notice, because that's when they finally... It wasn't until you actually looked at the plans that you realized how perfectly the house is divided. If you're going to do an inspection as a plumber, you're walking in the front door, and you're going up to the attic, and you're looking at the bathroom. You don't travel through the whole house and realize that you can't get from one side of the house to the other. They're going and doing one specific inspection. So it wasn't until electric came in and caught the piping and everything, and realized that, hey, we don't have any permits for this, that they brought it to our attention.
I mean, so I'm trying to figure out, like, so the permit for anything in an attic was never issued?
Correct.
Correct?
They did, construction did do some inspections, but until they issued a CO, it is not approved. And they wouldn't have issued the CO, because when they went to match it with zoning, the construction official knows that zoning's ordinance's attic are uninhabitable, he knows that.
Right, yeah, I mean, inspection by an inspector doesn't mean that it is approved.
Correct.
You know, they just do their job, they go there and inspect, but it's not...
The piping there.
I just have a question. You heard the testimony of their expert, the architect, with regard to the attic and livable space? Does that comport with our zoning?
It would in the sense of, if you were talking about the side, the heights. My problem is that the definition of attic is it's uninhabitable, so that makes that section a meat point.
And what section, what section of our code is that in?
In the definitions, terms in define 430-8, the definition of attic is that it is uninhabitable. So as long as the architect and the homeowner calls it an attic, they're in violation of the zoning ordinance.
And the testimony he was talking, I think you said that was the construction code that he was citing?
Yes, some of it was zoning in the heights of a half-story, because they probably weren't aware, and we never had any communication, not that I'm aware, like, never had any communication with the architect to explain that it's in our definition, that attics are uninhabitable.
Understood, thank you.
And that's regardless of the construction code?
Correct. Zoning is a prior approval, so you always need zoning and engineering as a prior approval construction. So if zoning says no, you can't look in.
Can you have a bathroom in uninhabitable attic?
Correct, and the code allows you to...
Can you have a bathroom in an uninhabitable attic?
No. And the code allows simultaneous reviews, so you have to understand that people can submit to construction and be working on an application, and not be approved by zoning, because the code allows that now for simultaneous reviews. And as employees, we want that, because we want to speed along people's permits. However, the zoning and the prior approvals need to meet at the end, and so they allowed the application to continue, but it didn't mean that it had zoning approval.
When was the last time you were in this house?
I was never in the house. I'm zoning officer and director, I have six departments, I have inspectors, so Michael and Haley visited the site. And that was in January. We were waiting for revised plans to see if they were interested in removing any of the items, but I never received revised plans.
When you had your meeting with the family, did there anything conclude from that? You gave them a list of things to do. Did they say they would do them?
He said he would go back to his architect. I know that at the time, the bathroom and the attic was important to him, and we understood that. So it sounded like he was going to go back and talk to his architect, they were going to talk about it, and they were going to come back.
He chose a different course.
But, yeah.
Haley, can you confirm, since you were on-site, can you confirm the testimony of Jennifer as to what has transpired?
Yes, so what she said is true. When we went there, it was January 17th, we walked the entire house, and we walked to the third story where it was finished, and there is a full bathroom there. I do, I'm sorry, I also want to point out one additional thing. The property owner claims that he submitted plans to the town, and they were approved, or he did the work, but I am looking at the inspector's records. The building inspector on August 28th, 2019, he has a note that says, "Found a bathroom in the attic. Approved plans do not indicate finishes at attic." The plumbing inspector also has a similar note, that's on September 10th, 2019. It says, "No more inspections until plans are updated, revise for attic bathroom." So it seems that the work was done.
So the town never approved the bathroom, either from a zoning standpoint or a building standpoint?
Yes, absolutely correct.
Or a building standpoint?
Their notes reflect that, that as they saw things, they waited for the property owner to return to zoning, and it never returned.
With regard to the additional doors that was testified to, you saw those doors?
Yes, yes.
And you saw the plans, and they were never approved, correct?
No, they were never approved.
And with regard to the kitchens, you saw those?
Yes, I saw the kitchens.
And based upon your training, your experience, those cutouts and the appliances that were in other rooms, what conclusion did you draw?
So I saw the three cutouts, and I asked him, I'm like, "What's going here?" One, he said a refrigerator, one was a dishwasher, and one was an oven stove, so it's created, all those items, you prepare food, that's a kitchen, it's not a wet bar.
And that was for all three sections of the house?
That was in the right one only. When we originally walked in first, we saw the main kitchen, or the center unit, all the appliances were already in place. Then we walked over to the right side, where it was just the upper and lower cabinets, and the cutouts for the appliances to go in, so that's why I asked what was going in there. The unit on the left was set up the same way, without the appliances in the spots.
And based upon, again, your experience, that indicated that there were going to be three separate kitchens?
Correct, yes.
And you said you walked from the center to the right, center to the left, you had to go outside to do that?
So there was, the door wasn't put in, but there is an opening to go through. It looked like a door was, would have been put up. I believe you have...
That's now CO?
It was just a rough cutout, like a door could go out.
Right.
And now the doors are in. No, I don't think the doors have been put in. You had to stop.
Yeah, I have not gone back to the site.
They weren't supposed to...
Thought they blocked the walls.
There were five-foot gaps, and there are now a size gap to specifically put a door in. See the molding for the door. The only thing that's next is to put the doors in.
Or seal it up.
And I think those might be in the pictures.
Yeah.
And were there any other violations, other than the additional doors to the outside, the three kitchens, and the closing of the interior walkways, and the kitchen and the bathroom upstairs?
And the deck that turned into a...
The enclosed porch or whatever it is.
...space too, correct? And the bathroom in the attic, they uninhabitable.
So everything that you cited for violation, they've not done anything to correct any of it?
No.
And you heard that the only thing they came back tonight was for interpretation of the bathroom on the third floor?
Yes, which is confusing, because how...
Yeah, it is, it's confusing to us, too. Because if we leave this room tonight, and let's say we granted them that one item, there's still a violation on everything else. So you would then submit violations to them again, correct? If we deny the bathroom up on the third floor, then you're going to issue them a violation for everything, correct?
Correct. And the stop work orders would remain.
Does your architect have a copy of the original plans?
That was ten years ago, I didn't realize it was so long. It's unlikely, because he made so many changes over ten years. That would update.
Okay.
I might have...
Okay.
There's going to be a chance...
You'll have an opportunity to redirect, to... Do you have any questions of the witnesses? Do you have questions? Yes. Can you let him use one of the microphones?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Now, you may need to answer also, so don't go far away, okay? I'm going to see if we can...
Actually have a set, in the construction file, that some of these are dated 2013. Some of these pages are the old pages.
We may need copies. I don't think we're going to finish this case tonight, because it's already in the ten, I mean, I'll go for a few minutes, but...
Yeah, just for a point of clarification, Ray, too, the applicant keeps waving a packet of the plans that were approved, approved, approved. But what we're saying right now is, all the packets of plans that were submitted that were approved have been changes through the years multiple times, okay? And so there's no really, one set of plans were set in, approved, acted on, and built, right?
It looks like construction did keep some of the pages in the file, because some of these are actually dated 2013. Because the set that zoning received a copy of, and construction's working with now, most of the pages are stamped in by the construction department as 2020, so just about every page is...
Okay, thank you.
You testified that there were no approvals given for a bathroom. Is that correct?
In the attic, by zoning, correct.
Well, I believe your testimony, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there were no approvals given, not to zoning, construction, that nobody gave those approvals, is that correct?
Correct, I have the tax sheets that shows the bathroom is stamped in.
Can you, for the record, please state the date of this jobs copy of approved plans by the Parsippany Troy Hills Construction Department?
It's 2020.
The record attention at 85.1, can you please state the date listed here, stamped by the Parsippany Troy Hills Construction Department?
January 2020.
Can you read what it says on the bottom of this paper?
The attic plan. However, recall that these do not have zoning prior approval, so they're not fully approved. They're a plan that's only stamped in, so just because you have a plan that's stamped in, doesn't mean it's approved.
Does it show a bathroom in the attic?
All the plans that were dated later have an attic. I'm not denying that he didn't come back for an attic. What I'm saying is his 2013 approval did not have an attic. He did later come with an attic. I never deny that.
Okay, I just want to clarify, the earlier testimony, it made it sound like there was never any kind of approval given for a bathroom. And I'm sitting here with plans that show there was approval given.
It wasn't approval, there was a smittle for plans for an attic. If you look at the text sheets, the bathroom was denied.
That's a log-in date, right?
It's a log-in date.
Log-in date.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
It's not an approval. Correct, Jennifer, it's not an approval.
It's a log-in date.
Okay, you testified that what initially brought your attention to this property was items that made it appear like it would be a three-family, correct?
Correct.
One of the main items that you testified, in fact, I believe it was the first item that caught your attention, was the fact that appeared that there were three separate kitchen areas. Is that correct?
Correct. The electric department, where you want us to go.
You also testified that appeared that there were walls set up with door slots or that could be closed that would in fact create three separate living areas. Is that correct?
Correct. The plans were revised.
And is that one of the, is that the reason why having doors on the outside ran afoul of zoning? In other words, because you are now creating separate entrances?
The zoning interpretation of the municipal maintenance door and the zoning officer for a couple of the last 30 years on most municipalities is if you create three separate living environments where you have separate kitchens, place to cook, a place to use a full bathroom, and its own separate entrance and exit. And when you put invisible walls down and create three separate family units, it is a three-family.
So hypothetically, if you were to remove the kitchens and create a full open space on the first floor, what in the zoning ordinance would bar him from having the two additional entrances, assuming they were free-flowing spaces across the first floor?
He never asked me if he wanted to make any alterations. So if he submits revised plans with different changes, I would look at them. There was never discussion that you were going to turn the kitchens back into that one. I asked if you wanted to do that. The kitchens are my issue. If you removed two of the kitchens and returned the wet bars, then there isn't separate eating facilities in the other units and it wouldn't make it a three-family. But no, he never wanted to do that. He never wanted to give up his three kitchens.
Are you testifying that neither my client or anybody on your behalf, such as myself, never.
Submit revised plans? No.
Never went to somebody in your office or a representative and suggested these proposals?
You have to submit plans. We don't do hypotheticals. You have to submit a revised plan that is submitted to the zoning department and I review, and then I will tell you. Hypotheticals or negotiations is not something that the zoning department can do. You have to submit plans. So there were no revised plans submitted to zoning.
Can you cite to a specific provision in the ordinance that bars a bathroom in attic?
I didn't ban the bathroom. I banned any habitable space in the attic. The definition of attic is an uninhabitable space. It's the definition.
So, in other words, the bathroom per se is not an issue. In other words, there's no provision in the ordinance or anywhere else that would bar a bathroom?
Yes, it would because anything in the attic is not permitted. It's uninhabitable space. So anything you put in the attic or you renovate the attic is a violation.
Is there a provision in the ordinance, notwithstanding the semantics of calling it an attic, that bar what my client has up there? In other words, from a height standpoint or anything else?
You're calling it something other than an attic?
If we were to.
What are you going to call it, a third floor?
We were to call it.
Then it needs a variance because.
It's either an attic or a third floor.
Oh, yeah. What if we were to.
Of course, it's skylights or something.
A half, would we call it a half-story?
If it's a half-story on a two-and-a-half-story house and you're still calling it an attic because the ordinance calls it an attic, it would still be the same thing. An attic is an attic, however you want to call it.
Does.
The ordinance allows two stories with an attic. Basement, two stories, attic.
Does the R3 zone permit two-and-a-half stories?
Yes, it does.
So if this were a half-story, if this were a half-story, it would be two-and-a-half stories, correct?
Correct. But again, if you renovated the attic, you'd be in violation of the attic definition.
So what specifically here makes it, constitutes it as a, aside from the semantics, based on the fact that you testified that a bathroom per se is not a violation? What is it, aside from the bathroom?
Renovation to an attic, turning it from uninhabitable to habitable makes it a zoning violation. Whether it be bathrooms, theater room, a living room, a bedroom, as soon as you renovate and make it an attic habitable, you're in violation of the definition of attic.
How can a bathroom make it habitable if you've already testified that a bathroom per se isn't a violation?
I'm being gay.
You know, you've asked her the same question three times. Jennifer is too smart and too experienced that you're going to catch her. She said it's not an inhabitable space. You could put a kitchen, you could put a hot tub up there, then you're making it a habitable, you're trying to make it a habitable space. Is that correct, Jennifer?
Correct.
So whatever you put up there, you need a zoning permit before you can do it.
Correct. And if that was the only violation, would you see that? Have you had any applications to the board's adjustment over the years to renovate? I think you had one recently for somebody wanting to pull back from an attic. It happens all the time. It's, if that was only that or if it was a C-Ben?
Okay, I'm trying to be cute, don't mean to come across that way, just for our own edification, so we know what to do. What is it that's allowed?
Nothing allowed in the attic. It's storage, it's uninhabitable space. We made it habitable.
On their plans, they designate that space as an attic, correct?
Correct. It's right on the bottom of the plans, attic.
And that was the accepted plans in 2013, attic?
Attic. And at that time, there was nothing in the attic. It was, over time, like I said, plans change and changed and changed.
Jennifer, you have no evidence that there's ever been approved plans beyond 2013 or?
There have been different pages that were submitted over the years that building allowed. The hardest thing is once building approves them to start the work for the addition and the plans change, they don't stop it. They allow the changes of the plans. So as it kept changing, the inspectors, like I said, were only approving certain items. It wasn't until a more experienced inspector walked through the house that they caught that it was, that the wet bars on the plans were kitchens. And they let us know. And it wasn't until we did the inspection that we found about the attic and the bathroom in the attic. We didn't know about it originally.
What provision causes a bathroom to make a space habitable?
As soon as you put anything in the attic.
You're asking the same question again. She's saying that whatever you put up there in the way of trying to make it a habitable space, correct me if I'm wrong, you need a variance.
Then you haven't asked for any variance.
So the fact that you put a bathroom up there is not the key thing, it's the fact that you're making it a habitable space.
I'm asking for a provision of the, I still haven't got an answer.
It's the definition.
It's in the definition, it's in the definition section under attic. Defines it as an uninhabitable space. And it's not just the bathroom. He renovated the entire attic and admitted that that was going to be his man cave and there was going to be a theater and he, like, he admitted to that.
You got approvals for that?
Please, it's not according to her, you didn't.
The plans have got approved on it.
Plans were logged in. There's no approval.
So the plan of 2013 shows on the, what page is that? The second floor, the attic had a pull-down stairs. Neither was in it. None of the plans.
Never had a pull-down. Did you put a pull-down?
No, the plans, would you like to look at them?
Do you want to mark that?
He doesn't remember, it was 10 years ago.
Can we mark that into evidence?
Let me take a pull-down. This is construction.
Okay. Yep, we're going to mark that O1.
Yeah, that, yeah, and I'm not questioning that. People make changes. They chose to change that. I don't have a problem with that. But I don't want the board to think that all of those items were approved. They were not. That's why I'm here tonight, to make sure they understand. The plans changed over and over. Not everything.
Hold on, I have a question.
Look, I'm going to give you till 10:15.
Really?
And then I'm going to have to carry the case, okay?
We're going to carry the case anyway.
Yeah, but I would want not to break at a point where we come back and nobody remembers what we did. Go ahead.
You testified that it was the construction officials who swapped out pages, correct?
A lot of times with an application, they do allow the contractor homeowner to swap the pages or the office. So the policy is depending on how busy we are, we swap them out. But as Haley said, there was a 2013 set of plans in there. So they caught, I think in 2020, the building department finally asked for a brand-new full set with what they call the bubbling that shows the changes. So that's when you'll see the changes. Those changes did not include the kitchens.
And in 2020, that was during COVID, correct?
Correct.
And were there reduced hours at the building department?
Yes, most of, I worked full-time, but the rest of my staff worked one week on and one week off during COVID.
You testified that some of the staff, you believe, might have been confused, correct?
And the fact that I wasn't sure if they, and I'm talking about the office staff, that they didn't keep the old pages, but Haley's looking through and we have some of the 2013 pages.
And then you also testified that new officers came in, Mr. King's point, around the time of COVID when there may have been limited office hours, correct?
Correct.
And I believe that my client should bear that responsibility for the confusion of the.
Appropriate.
Yeah, it's not appropriate. It's a hypothetical.
I would draw the question. But again, to repeat my prior one, it was only after the initial confusion with construction officials that new officials came in and took note of the issues.
Incorrect. The inspectors resigned, retired, and left, and new inspectors were hired, who then reviewed the entire file, went out and did the inspections, and walked through the home, and realized that many of the items had changed that were not on their set of plans, which is what triggered the 2020 revised plans, is when the inspectors went out, they realized it wasn't that anybody called a mistake, it was that employees leave and retire and new inspectors take over, and they review the plans, and they reviewed it in its entirety and found the errors. And that's when they asked for revised plans. I mean, if you look at the file, there's notes all over it. It's changed and changed. So I think there's a misunderstanding that just because you submit to construction and they revise the plans and they stamp it, doesn't mean you have an approval. It just means that they've taken it in and they're reviewing it. And if you look at pages and pages of text sheets, you'll see all the denials.
How many denials do you think they had? Too many to count?
Only a couple hours.
Okay, thank you.
So come through, I mean.
Oh, if you've got denial, let's get this straight.
I don't want to hear from you right now, I'm sorry.
There's, if you look at the.
Trying to get through this witness.
If you look at the text sheets, this one in particular is the staff work order that was issued. Which one is this? This is all construction. There's pages and pages of notes. Each time an inspector goes out, this is just one inspector's notes. So you're going to have four subplots, plumbing, electric, building, and fire. Each time they come out, there's notes and notes and notes. So.
Who doesn't think they want to be made?
You're just not going to give up, are you?
I'm sorry, but I mean, if you were in my position, we would say so.
They're corrections, they're changes.
They're corrections.
Yeah, that is accepted.
Does it mean they were approved?
Those does not say.
Getting approval.
Sir, sir, your attorney is representing.
I'm going to throw you out in a minute.
Those does not say approved plans.
It's the plans that went out on the site for them, inspect. But understand that just because you have construction taking in the plans and stamping it, does not mean you have zoning. I'm the zoning officer. I can represent construction because I'm the director, but I'm here as the zoning officer.
I just want to make sure the testimony is clear, there was construction approval and prior zoning approval that was subsequently revoked. We're not disputing that. I just want to make sure that the testimony factor is clear.
The testimony, from what I'm hearing, is there was no prior approval.
Not for the kitchens, they were wet bars and not for the bathroom.
Again, I'm looking at a copy of plans that are stamped approved.
Stamped without approval.
And the testimony was, is they, when they accepted, they had to stamp as approved. Doesn't mean that that whole thing is approved because you're submitting, I believe your client is submitting what they intend that has to be built and inspected. And then there has to be a final CO as well, correct?
Correct. And each time the inspectors came out, all those notes reflect basically a denial and asking for corrections to be made.
Jennifer, at the end of the day, do you stamp a plan saying zoning approval and sign it?
We issue a zoning permit and we stamp the survey. Back in 2013, we didn't keep the plans. No, not the building jacket, but we issue a zoning permit, we have to end the worksheet, and then we have to survey. We sign off on the survey. Because you know, zoning, we care about setbacks and the building's previous coverage. It's only unless there's an issue down the road in building if they see like.
Which is this case.
Which is in this case. Normally, we would not keep the construction plans. It's not until probably, what would you say, Haley, a couple of years ago, that we now keep the construction plans that we approved in the file? Because people go into construction, they submit, and then it changes, and it changes, and it changes, and it changes. And then they try to say, "Oh, I have approval for everything." Well, that approval was for a specific thing. It wasn't approval for kitchens and other things.
Did she find anything? Did Haley find anything?
You found those documents from 20, some of those documents 2013?
We pulled downstairs, I thought she was pointing it out.
Yes.
Yes.
So we're going to mark that as O1.
O1? I don't think she's in the.
Yeah, well, yeah.
W1 for witness one?
Yeah, witness.
Here's the second floor. She'll have to pull downstairs.
And that's A5.
Second floor, she'll have to pull downstairs, huh?
So.
You made it P1.
Sit there, you know, that one exists? So this plan doesn't exist?
PZ.
P1 for pursuit.
PZB1 will be A5.
And here's the floor plan. Since then, they've added a doorway on each side and on this side.
That's going to be marked. Parsippany zoning board two. We'll get copies for you.
Is it just the cover sheet? I don't know.
You should because it's stamped on.
Thank you.
And this is ZB83, this is the cover sheet. And that has, I think, on it the different pages as well, right?
Has the paper, A5.
Yeah, it has a listing of all the other pages.
Yeah.
So what happens with construction is when the first page is revised, because they issued the permit for the 2013, that's why you'll see that stamp on the same page. But that doesn't mean that every single page, everything is approved. It just shows that they're trying to match the new 2020 plan to this one in 2013. It isn't until the inspectors go through the pages that they mark their denials during the inspection process.
Jennifer, for.
So I'm the applicant and I have this stuff that I brought into town and I have this paper that says approved on it and that I plan. And now I said, gee, okay, now I have to have the inspection. But I'm notified, though, that I failed the inspection on that thing, right?
Correct. They receive a sticker that's issued by the.
I've been through that enough myself, so. I've been through that enough myself, by the way, sorry.
So, you have as much as I have.
No, but the point being, the point being, is, is, you can see why somebody says, I have an approved plan, and I built that plan, uh, therefore I should be good to go.
It is very confusing for-
Yeah, but, so, in, in defense of the fence, but the point, the point being we're making here, from our standpoint, is this has not been built as to the plan and approved by the appropriate sources, and therefore they're in violation of a number of cases. Do we, does it matter how many they're in violation of for us, Mr. Chairman, as, as that weigh on our decision here, as a, as a, I mean, we're now talking about-
The only thing, these only, uh, there's only request an interpretation for the bathroom.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else, he's gonna have to refile.
In interpretation, no, he thought, I thought he was in-
He appealed your decision, but he-
P O, I'm sorry, not interpreted, P O, yeah.
So, yeah, I, I thought they were trying to get our interpretation of what a bathroom is on the third floor. No, the interpretation is, this is an attic and it's uninhabitable, so that, that should end the discussion, as far as I'm concerned, you know, why, why do you-
It doesn't seem to be getting, going forward.
Why, why, why can't that?
It was a two-pronged argument, uh, one relates to Mr. Constance's argument tonight, the other relates to my argument last time, which is that there's a stop argument. This case law to back that up. When you have construction approval, which, with respect to the zoning officer, to her own point, very misleading and very confusing, we have, without the record reflect, we have, exhibit I submitted last time-
The plan was approved by the construction office, not by the inspection's approvals, okay? It wasn't approved.
Do you have any more questions for her?
Yeah.
Do you have any more questions for her? Because you got, you got a minute.
One, one last, one last question. Uh, when was it brought to my client's attention, uh, that a bathroom was not allowed in the attic?
Are you asking from construction or zoning? If it's construction, I'd have to go through all the text sheets. I know that at the time that Haley and Michael did the inspection, which was on the 17th of this year, plumbing was also doing an inspection, and he spoke with Haley and Michael, and let him know that the plans, uh, of the bathroom, the piping and everything were denied, and he recommended that the bathroom be removed, and, um, had problems with, with the piping and everything, so, and according to Haley's notes, uh, 2019 was all the, there were issues with the bathroom, or there were-
But they never said anything about this?
You just don't listen, do you?
The, it, the, the notes from several different subrural officials show in 2019 that there were issues with the bathroom.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Hey, we're gonna, we're gonna mark those in as well.
Um, Nora, what do we got?
January 10th.
I'll, I'll get that.
January?
10th.
10th. Wanna carry this case to January 10th? Do you want a decision right now?
I'll talk to the zoning official and make some kind of arrangements, if it's been done with it, I'm not gonna change anything.
Just, just a reminder that it's not negotiations, not a court, it's not filed, you have to remove the items that I asked, it's not like I'm, they're not enforced, and it's not a trial, it's not negotiations, I don't ask for requirements to negotiate, I don't negotiate. You correct the, the violations and remove the items. And then, if you wanna apply for attic in the bathroom separately, but it's not negotiations, I wanna make that clear on the record, zoning officer, there's no hypotheticals, there's no negotiation, you submit a revised plan, and you let no changes.
And if he has something that does not comply, then he has to get a variance, request a variance.
Correct.
And that doesn't come through your office, that comes through this court, right?
And I would be doing a review on that, because I do the reviews for-
Got it, okay, got it.
And the application right now was to, with regard to your decision, there was no application for a C variance, or D variance. So we can't even hear that tonight, that would have to be a new application, correct?
Correct.
You wanna carry the case?
An appeal, nothing else.
Preserve my client's rights, yeah, yes.
We can carry the case.